All right, it is two o'clock and the meeting is called to order. Our roll call, all of our trustees are here, our treasurer is here, and our attorney is here. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay.
Because the adult access area is inextricably linked to the minors card policy, I was hoping that those two could be intertwined. Because we did get a draft handed out at the last meeting. And so I think that the minors card access and card and the the adult access only areas are so closely linked. I think that that might be really one conversation in there. It all seems like I can figure out one without the other. I don't know if we take a vote on it pending or not.
We would, interim director?
I would ask that we please not do that. The draft policy was not put on our website. I was not able to review it. And once again, I asked for no new policies and now we're adding another policy. So if we could please not do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Well, actually, I need to repeat the motion. So what was your motion?
It was to combine the adult access.
Did you say the name of the number?
The adult. The motion was to combine or add in the adult access only restricted area policy draft with the minors card policy.
Okay, so it has been moved to combine the adult access only restricted area policy draft with the minors card policy.
So I was just going over what the amended agenda in front of us is different from the the agenda we got in our packet. So if we could start there, since we're talking about this, amending the agenda, what is different on the amended one? So I'm trying to go through it and I don't see it.
Twelve. Yeah, we added number twelve.
Well, there's already number twelve, so. So you added
So we inserted.
Discussion of authority to fill open positions?
Yes.
Isn't that already on this one?
It's on the amended one. It wasn't on the one that came out last week.
Discussion of future. Okay, so that's the only thing that was added in there? And then what are the numbers that trustee Hanley is asking to put together?
Yeah, just amending number ten.
Because I saw that policy in the second policy you're talking about. Is it not on here already? So it's not even on here?
That's right. But it's so closely intertwined that I think that they should both be open. If we're not going to solve it today, we can work our way through it. There's no way we're going to have a final version.
I am in agreement with the interim director. Our administrative staff is really strapped right now. We're down a few people. And I think that adding another policy would I just don't want to overstress them. Trustee class?
I think we should introduce the adult access restricted area as we go through the minor card and just say this is, explain it. We don't have to go through the policy in detail, but we should be able to introduce it as part of our card policy discussion.
Can you speak, Mike? Sorry to hear back here. We can't hear.
I did not have it turned on, sorry. I would like to introduce the adult access restricted areas new policy or potential policy when we discuss library cards or how it would affect library card policy, but maybe not go through it in detail, save it.
Okay, we could, at the end where we talk about future topics, we could discuss putting on a future agenda at that time.
Can I amend? Can I make an amendment to the motion?
You could.
I'd like to amend the motion to include the introduction of the adult access only area as part of the minors card policy discussion today.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this? Again, I would just like to have our admin team survive until our director comes in. Trustee class?
I would just say we're not going to make very, we're not going to finish minor card. We're not going to have an, or a solution for it unless we can discuss this. So I think we need to at least introduce it and how it would change minor card policy. So I'm in favor of the motion. And also as we're talking about amendments, we're missing financial review. Usually it's an action item, but the financial statement for the month is not there. We can't approve this meeting. That's not even there.
We can approve what's on the agenda. I just believe that, well, interim director, do you want to address that or do you want me to?
With our business manager resigning, we do not have the ability to generate all of the reports that we have normally generated. Our treasurer has very politely volunteered time to create the report for July. It, however, was not done in time to get it on the agenda. So it will be added to the next regular meeting. It will be two months at that. I think it's unfair to think that we're going to have the exact same packet when we are down two admin members.
Trustee class?
This one I find particularly critical because it should include our July payment at the county not as treasurer, but the anyway, the county gave me the numbers of what it was going to be July 25th. And I'd like to see that that's what we really have. And that completely affects projected balance at the end of the year. Because it's the taxes for the second half, so
Point of order.
We have to have this.
The trustee will state her point of order and remember points of order that we're violating Robert's rules of order.
Right, I know that. Okay, I just don't know if this is the right place for this. Is this the right place for what trustee class is talking about? What, what is trustee class trying to accomplish right now?
We can't wait till next month to have this. We're trying to finalize the budget. And if we don't know what the projected carryover is, and that's totally dependent on this payment that came in on July 25th, and we don't have any record of it than what the office gave me. So I think we need the financial
Chair.
At least next week, either a special meeting or something.
Actually, I'm going to rule in favor of trustee's point of order because that, this discussion would more appropriately be under the consent agenda. So we'll get to that after.
Not as long as it's soon.
Well, that's where it would normally be.
It's under a special action item.
Thank you, Chair Otis. And the operative rule related to trustee Hanley's request is 784204 4C, which states that an agenda may be amended after the start of a meeting upon a motion that states the reason for the amendment and states the good faith reason the agenda item was not included in the original agenda posting. Final action may not be taken on an agenda item added after the start of a meeting unless an emergency is declared necessitating action at that meeting. The declaration of justification shall be reflected in the minutes. So it appears that it may be permissible to amend the agenda so long that there's a permissible good faith reason that it wasn't included prior to the start of the meeting. And if that's the case, final action may not be taken on it unless we have an emergency. I haven't heard an emergency stated yet, so I don't think we get to that question at this point. However, nothing would prohibit any trustee from making a comment related to an adult access section if it was relating to a minors card policy during the discussion.
All right, so did you want to keep your motion on the floor? We would need to vote on the amendment and then vote on. So you would move, or let's see. So rather than move to combine adult access only restricted area policy draft, the minors card policy, you want to move to introduce? Okay, so if there's no further discussion on that, then we will vote on the amendment to remove the words to combine and, or actually just combine and replace that with the word introduce so that the whole motion would read move to introduce adult access only restricted area policy draft with minors card policy. So we're just voting on the amendment first, which is.
Sure.
Yes.
I do think that motion still is deficient in that it doesn't state the reason for the amendment and the good faith reason the agenda item was not included in the original agenda, which is required to be in the motion.
Okay. Have a good faith reason?
My reasoning is the policy on the adult access area was sent out and I did not see it until the agenda was already posted. And again, because they're inexplicably linked to things, the card policy, the adult access area, it was an already published agenda. So it was too late for me to ask for it to be put on there.
Actually, I, I could have up until forty-eight hours amended the agenda. Till forty-eight hours before this thing started. So I'm.
I read it, I guess, correct.
Oh. Okay, I'm thinking if there's not an emergency reason.
Well, the emergency is if we're going to take action on the item. The agenda can be amended if there's a good faith reason it wasn't included.
I think we had a good faith reason and we're not taking final action.
We can't hear.
No. Trustee class?
I would amend the motion.
Well, we haven't actually even voted on changing out the word combined with the word introduce.
Then I would change the amendment to say combine with the adult access restricted area proposed policy because we may make an invalid minor card policy action item without knowing about this other policy.
Trustee Otis?
So it's already been stated that we're not going to finalize the minor card policy today. Not reading your packet in time to adjust the amend, or ask for the an amendment on the agenda isn't reason to hold up the meeting right now. We all have it. We can all read it when we discuss the minor policy that's already on the agenda. We can have it in the back of our minds that this other policy is going to be brought up. So I say we just leave it how it is and get on with public comment.
I'm in agreement with that. But we do need to vote on it. I didn't get all of the reasoning. Why did you get that? Did you read it back?
Hanley amended the motion to introduce adult access only restricted area policy draft with the minors card policy. Hanley stated his reason is because the amendment came out before Hanley replied.
Okay, so we will go ahead and vote on the amendment to change, to insert the word introduce between move to and adult access. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sounds like the ayes have it. And so the word introduce is, the amendment is carried. And so now it says, we we want to introduce the adult access only restricted area policy draft, minors card policy with the reasoning stated. We will now vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sounds like the ayes have it. So we will move, the motion is carried to introduce the adult access only restricted area policy draft with the minors card policy.
Sorry, it's a tough start.
Okay. So let's, I remember to have good decorum and we will move on to the public comment section. And our first speaker is Michelle Lippert, or actually, oh, sorry, hold on. Speaker, state your name and community and speak for no more than three minutes. First is addressing, the board are expected to observe a level of civility and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal attacks or disruptions from audience members would be tolerated. Okay, now we have Michelle Lippert.
Good afternoon. Can you turn the microphone on, please? Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Michelle Lippert, Post Falls. As elected officials, you were entrusted with the responsibility to serve the community library network and our community at large. Now you face a pivotal decision, the final approval of the 2025 budget. The community has made its expectations clear. Are you prepared to honor them? At your August eighth meeting, nineteen community members took the time to voice their opinions. Of those eighteen passionately opposed to the proposed budget, which includes drastic cuts to book purchases, reduced operating hours, including the closure of all branches on Sundays, and significant staff reductions. Only one person spoke in favor of those cuts. Chair Otis mentioned receiving emails both supporting and opposing the budget. However, Mike Foye requests reveal that opposition far outweighed support. There were five times as many emails against the proposed budget as there were in favor. The message is undeniable. The citizens who engage with you, whether by speaking at meetings or through emails, are overwhelmingly in favor of fully supporting our libraries. They object to the proposed budget because it threatens the very resources that make our libraries valuable. Books, accessible hours, and professional staff. These citizens are the taxpaying members of our community and they have a vested interest in seeing our libraries thrive. Yet despite this overwhelming opposition, you seem poised to disregard their input. These citizens are not only your constituents, but also the backbone of our community you serve. How can their voices be ignored? Perhaps you share trustee Hanley's disturbing perspective as expressed at the June 27th meeting when he suggested that the centers against the conservative majority should be passed aside and deemed unworthy of consideration. Is this truly how you view the citizens who have spoken out and sent emails? Are their voices not worthy of your attention? I urge you to reconsider the proposed budget and listen to the community that elected you. The decision you make will resonate beyond this fiscal year. It will impact the very fiber of our community's educational and cultural resources. Stand with the citizens who value their libraries and reject the unnecessary cuts that threaten to undermine them. Thank you.
Now we have Teresa Burkett.
Good afternoon, my name is Teresa and I'm at Post Falls. I represent hundreds of voices with the library lines we know about of who could not be here today. We are asking you to fully fund our libraries. The role of libraries in the community is paramount. They serve as a fair environment for children, provide access to diverse information, creative employment searches, and host programs for individuals of all ages. It is crucial to ensure adequate funding for our community library to deliver an exceptional experience for all patrons. Proposed reduction of one hundred and fifty-two thousand from the collection budget is incongruent with this objective. Moreover, potential increases in label fees or insurance costs could impede access to essential resources and engaging programs. The decision to terminate seventy hours appears to reflect biased agenda that overlooks the needs of individuals working during weekdays and those of alternative faiths, contradicting the financial responsibility principles promised during their respective campaigns to Mr. Foss and Mr. Hanley. On neglecting to implement the three percent increase desired by the majority of constituents last year for a three percent increase this year, the community is left in a challenging situation with potential long-term repercussions. In light of your apparent concerns regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion policy within the library network, it is imperative to revisit the definitions. Diversity, the practice or quality of including individuals with diverse social and ethnic backgrounds, different genders, sexual orientations, orientations, and so forth. Equity, the quality of being fair and unbiased. Inclusion, the practice or policy of providing equal access to opportunities and resources for people who might otherwise be excluded or marginalized. Adopting a constructive approach to addressing these concerns in tandem with the best interests of the community is likely to yield positive outcomes for all. Please don't allow others when determining if this policy needs updating. Remember those terms. Thank you.
Okay, now we have Matt Raffey.
Matt Raffey, Post Falls. Budgeting is a key financial management activity. Usually governments invest months in budget activities. This is a good use of leaders' time and attention because the budget represents plans for future service to the community. I tally the time these trustees have spent on budgeting this year. But the numbers show is that this board has spent fewer than six hours deliberating the fiscal twenty-five budget. That's worth repeating. This board has spent fewer than six hours deliberating the fiscal twenty-five budget. Idaho Code says budgeting is one of your primary responsibilities. Idaho Code also says trustees are obligated to oversee financial management of the district. But this board has not discussed the unexpected state funds received in fiscal twenty-four for more than half million dollars. Use of those dollars may have restrictions and may be timed out. I have emailed the trustees twice about your need to discuss this revenue. The first time was mid-July. The second time was yesterday, mid-August. In not discussing these funds, this board is choosing to ignore the district's full revenue picture. How unbudgeted fiscal state, twenty-four state funds are used could and likely will impact the fiscal twenty-five budget, just as Mr. Foss has said. As a result of ignoring the unexpected state funds, and because this board spent fewer than six hours deliberating the fiscal twenty-five budget, you did not allow yourself enough time for careful thought. As a result, you made plans which may not be necessary to cut library hours and reduce staff. Those plans do not mesh with what the public wants from CLN, as you well know from a variety of sources. All the comments at the budget hearing last week, emails sent to the board, comments you've received in your meetings, show the public is greatly in favor of keeping libraries open on Sundays and in the evenings. The public also wants you to maintain staff and purchased materials. CLN's budget is around eight million dollars. Your time use has meant this board's attention expenditure equates to about one hour for every one point three million dollars. That's what this board's spending, fewer than six hours deliberating the eight million dollar fiscal twenty-five budget, equates to. Is it really surprising that this board's fiscal stewardship is being questioned? Is it really surprising that the public does not believe this board is acting in good faith to fulfill your duties to library users? Please be more responsible. Please be more thorough. Thank you.
Right next to you have Megan Kuntz.
Before I start, I have some handouts. The email address is on the air. Peers, trustees, staff, and members of the public. My name is Megan Kuntz and I am a Quirleam resident. I'm going to just say this, I wrote a written comment, but it's a little bit different than what other folks have been talking about. Maybe sending a hail mary in terms of the budget, not sure. In an effort to reduce the direct impacts of the fiscal year twenty-five budget on our community, I suggest that the board and staff explore the potential of having social workers in the CLN libraries. Libraries have evolved far beyond just lending books. They're a place where people connect, learn new skills, and find support. But the truth is, many of our patrons are dealing with challenging life situations. Homelessness, unemployment, domestic violence, isolation, et cetera. Our staff can attest to this as they encounter folks in these situations regularly, if not daily. And that's where social workers could really make an impact. Why social workers? We are trained to connect people with resources. Having a social worker on hand means we can help struggling patrons right then and there instead of pointing them to a pamphlet or sending them away, knowing that they'll probably come back with their need unreasonable. Social workers help build community. They can organize support groups, workshops on mental health, job readiness, or financial literacy. Things to help people get on their feet. They can also make sure that no one feels left out or isolated, which is required for overall community well-being. Our library staff is amazing, but they're not trained to handle everything. Social workers can take on those tough situations so our librarians can focus on what they do best. Our staff would feel supported and our patrons get the help they really need. The financial works. Something like this cost. Utilizing social work interns and volunteer social workers would be of minimal or no cost to the CLN. Interns are eager to get real-world experience and volunteers to provide service for social work value. In terms of Idaho, the Idaho Commission for Library Supports Initiatives that align with social workers in libraries, including their adult services and helping underserved populations. I included in my handout information from the Boise Public Library and I wasn't able to put that on there, so that picture. They are the only library in Idaho that has a speaker. Spokane has social workers at their libraries. Wrapping up, bringing social workers in our libraries isn't just about meeting needs. It's about making our libraries even more of a forest home for the community. It's a way to ensure that everyone who walks through our doors gets what they need. And with the financial benefits of using interns and volunteers, it can be done without a huge investment. That's all I have on social workers and libraries. I think I may have a few seconds, something doesn't go along. But I just wanted to comment on the picture from the Quirleam press with Mr. Jeremy Locken filming minor, oh, the commenter, and Mr. Tim Class smirking in the background. It's just not a good look. It's not a good look and good optics for the library network to have a propagandist filming minors. Thank you.
Right next, we have Mary White.
My name is Mary White. I'm from Rathrum. I was a school teacher and I recently, in January, had a young man show up homeless at my home. And I took him in and I have strict rules in my house about electronics at night. And I found porn on his phone, basically a picture of something. And he told me he got it in the Rathrum library. And I didn't believe him. I thought he had another device. But I took him down there and he did it right in front of me. We got into porn at the Rathrum library. So we, I met with Mark Foster and Alexa knew about it. I got kind of a rude, scary email from Alexa threatening my library privileges for going into the library to try to verify. So I was directed on, maybe the new. So I was directed on maybe the new director not consider everybody an enemy. I was just trying to see if it was true, and it was true. So we have not been able to recreate it, and the young man, I think, will make a video for me to show us how he did it, to see if it was just a glitch or he was accessing porn, not just one time. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
All right, next we have Leslie Wilde.
In an effort to communicate, I'd like to make an analogy and just to compare a library with a church. Patrons come to the library not to worship, but to learn. Like a church, it's a place of community. People smile and greet each other because there's a sense of belonging. It's a place of safety. All people in our community feel welcome when they walk through the doors. Young, old, poor, wealthy, the homeless, the friendless, the jobless, the suffering, and the joyful. There are riches in the library, books, programs, equipment, contacts, helpers, for all members of our community. It's a place that enriches and changes people's lives. And let's think of a church. Imagine that the individuals on the church board started making changes that did not align with the expectations and the values of the congregation. They cut staff, cut hours, cut materials, cut programs that bring the congregation together. The congregation's reaction would probably be, "We've worked hard over the years to grow and meet the needs of our community. We've shown our support by tithing. We're even willing to tithe a bit more to continue our programs and build our church." This community is willing to support our libraries. For over a year, I have attended in person or watched the trustee meetings recorded on YouTube, every single board of trustees meeting. I may not have been sitting in the room, but I am aware and I do understand and appreciate the time and the energy that you've devoted as trustees. And I think the word trustees, we're trusting you to continue to make our libraries vital and healthy assets in our community. And in response to a recent published letter written by a member of this board, the community is humanizing you. Those who speak up aren't leftist propagandists. We aren't a divided community. We just want to work together to keep our libraries healthy and able to support the needs of our growing community. Thank you.
All right, next we have Jean Richardson.
My name is Jean Richardson. I'm from Haydon. I want to express my strong objection to the direction this board is taking. It is basing its decisions on extreme ideology rather than the expressed needs and best interests of this community. For example, choosing to close on Sundays is obviously a personal religious ideology. If you were making that decision based on community needs, you would use library statistics to realize that Mondays are the slowest days and that Sundays are one of the busiest days. Your choice to dishonor DEI is a slap in the face to a significant portion of this community. It is disrespectful and unkind. It goes against your so-called Christian values. If you announce that you will no longer honor diversity, equity, and inclusion, then you are disrespecting people who do not look like you or believe as you do. You are saying the quiet part out loud, that it's okay to exclude certain parts of the population that you don't relate to. Your choice is not only unkind, it is un-American. How can you pledge allegiance to the United States of America? One nation, indivisible, when you choose qualities that are so divisive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone who spoke. We will now be moving on to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. The minutes of the regular meeting, July eighteenth, and the minutes of the special meeting, July third. There was a couple of typos. The July eighteenth meeting under roll call, Wednesday is spelled incorrectly, maybe for me. And then on the July third, under free executive session, Hanley is spelled incorrectly in both of the votes sort of third there. That was all I got. Anyone else? Trustee Hanley?
Yes, on the July third, top of the paper, I should say minutes, should say special board of trustees meeting minutes, that's not, it just went along, so you seem to add one word there, I think.
Sorry, where have we got that?
July third, yeah, I think it's the same as, it's not the agenda. They moved to accept the minutes for July eighth, July third, July fourth, there's no other, no such thing.
Yeah, has been moved to accept the minutes of July, I'm trying to get the order there, July eighteenth, July third, and July twenty-fourth. Did you say as amended?
It was an objection.
Did you say as amended?
Oh, I didn't say that. As amended.
All right. Has been moved to accept the consent agenda, the regular the meeting minutes from July eighteenth to July third and July twenty-fourth as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous, and the consent agenda is accepted. We will now move on to some inflation statistics. Are there any questions or comments? Interim Director?
I'll just point out two things. Our total visitors is down ten percent from July twenty-three. And I think that just shows, even with our largest library not offering full service and Apple not offering full service, we are still doing incredibly well with the number of people who are coming in to use our services. And I would also like to point out that under the new patron by card type, if you calculate the number of minor limited and teen limited, and then divide that by our minor cards, we only have six percent of our cards as limited cards. So to me, we are offering a tool to the community, but our parenting caregivers are still preferring full access for their minors. And the data shows that.
Trustee Foss?
Why would you contend that parents are voting for full access for minors just because they haven't got a different card than they originally had, or are you comparing to the number of full access cards? Is that listed?
Yes, I'm comparing, I'm adding fifty-five plus five hundred and sixty-four and then dividing that by the total number of minor cards. About six percent of our minor registered users are using limited cards, and ninety-four percent are not.
Where are you seeing the percentage? Where are you seeing the percent? Are you calculating?
There's two comments, the possibility exists that our parents may be aware that there is a minor card and whether they are and may be aware of that or not, that would be a possible contributing factor. The other I wanted to bring up was the Freco usage. I think that was a music streaming service. And I thought that was discontinued, so I'm not sure I understand how we had seven thousand two hundred and eleven usage of that system. Is that, is that potential came with the shared, asked the director that, but is the system still upwards, expiring, or what's going on with that?
Interim Director?
From what I under, from what I remember, Freco was purchased through the consortium. And then due to our customers enjoying that service and not having another alternative, we elected to purchase it just for CLN. So that's why you continue to see the statistics for that.
Chris Robinson?
When a parent comes in to get a new card, which would be the nine thousand two hundred and sixty-two, that's the total. So I see that mine is under minor or across minor. Those are new cards per but per location as well. Each, I mean, each location is, okay, so at each location, when a parent comes in to get a minor's card, a card for one of their children, a minor, isn't it told to them about their options? So they do, they are making an educated choice on what card they're getting for their minor. Is that correct?
Interim Director?
That is correct. It's presented as an option when issuing a card.
Trustee Foss?
So on the people counter, I should have studied it more. I'm trying to look for a pattern, but overall, year-to-date compared to last year, year-to-date, we're down quite a bit, and the majority of that is post falls and it looks like Ethel, but there's a number of the others that are down also. Even Rathrum's down from last year. I would expect Rathrum and Hayden to, well, I guess Hayden is, but if circulation is up, why isn't people count? Do you count people coming in to post falls to pick up books? Is that being counted? Or are they just picking up a lot of books and they're only counting once when they walk in, or what do you think's going on?
Interim Director?
I mean, the number of visitors or people counter does not necessarily coincide with the number of circulating items. Because one person can check out, you know, thirty items, and you might have a library where you just have an older population and they check out four books every time they come. So it really is not something that you can explain or determine. And, you know, as far as the comment of like Rathrum being down, like if you really look at that, I think that's maybe less, like, I think that's two percent down. I don't, I don't have my calculator, but it's not a significant number. So as a whole, I think I wrote down that I, yes, so ten percent from July to July were down with visitors. And then our total circulation for the year is down twelve percent.
Okay, final comment. Trustee Ellen?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back one point more to the Freco usage. Was that the seventeen thousand dollar item that we struck for the budget when we were doing a twenty-two budget? Or is that something different? Because I do remember canceling due to cost of music streaming service. So I'm not sure I understand how it's still there, if that's the same item we talked about when we were doing the budget.
I think we talked about it, but I don't think that we took that out. I thought we were, okay. Was your recollection?
I know.
Okay, I think we were maybe just gonna wait and see how it went. All right, so our next item is the director's report. We need to move on and spend super important, okay, Trustee Foss?
I, we skipped over it. It wasn't on here. Financial should have been before the circulation. I move that we I have moved that the board expects the financial report within a week so that we can review it before the next meeting. I'm not willing, personally, I'm not willing to wait till next month because we've already finished the budget by then. So my move that the financial report be produced or provided within one week of today.
We're not in that section.
It should be right there. It was last month's.
Point of order. The trustee will say their point of order.
Saying it should be right there and it's not, means you can't pop it.
This is last month. Before.
Right, it, it it should have been run up with the consent agenda, I guess.
Separate action item.
Interim Director?
I would just, I'm just gonna make a comment, which is the trustees received their packet on August eighth at our last meeting. And if you looked at your packet, you could have asked me any time between now and then to meet your deadline. But being attacked in the middle of this meeting for something that isn't on the agenda is very uncomfortable and very hostile and also to me seemed as if you do not understand the full ramification of the board's decision to halt the hiring of a new business manager until the director arrives. There are big links between that action and what you're asking for now.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the director's report.
What about my motion?
Okay, so I rule in favor of your point of order. Thank you for bringing back that.
And I was told that this would be here today, when it asked.
It would be nice if we had it within a week, but if that's not possible.
We're not approving the budget.
All right, so director's report.
I will do a facilities portion. As far as Apple and post falls, Apple is done with the painting and the final electrical work will be done this week. At post falls, they are painting. And we are waiting on carpet for both locations. But our project manager is working to get the carpet as soon as possible. And then we are also working with the Department of Corrections, which is a vendor recognized by the state to secure our furniture at a discounted rate. So we are making progress. And that's where those two projects are. And our Harrison Library has had fifty-six thousand dollars set aside in the budget to have two projects done. And we currently went out for bid for both of those projects. So we're having a ramp, an ADA entrance ramp installed to make the library accessible. And then we are dealing with the standing or groundwater that continues to be a problem. And we have a French drain installed, but we did have engineers and then architect work with us on this project. And the bid deadline is August twenty-ninth. And so we are just hoping that we get some decent bid. And so we are just hoping that we get some decent bids and that we can get this worked on during summer train still. And then with insurance, uh, we received our initial I-CRIM renewal for um, twenty, for fiscal year twenty-five. And we had budgeted eighty-five thousand dollars, but it came in closer to ninety thousand dollars. So we will need to discuss in the budget of where to find those five thousand dollars. And um, I've also been in contact with um, Hartwell Insurance, which has experience with I-CRIM. And with government entities, and they are working as our broker to ensure we have the best possible insurance. At the best possible price. And the I-CRIM renewal is due October first. So we will need to ensure that we have time on a future meeting to discuss the renewal. And potentially have someone from Hartwell to come and give a presentation of the insurance. And then um, I have met with our attorney, I think twice. Regarding our staffing plan for fiscal year twenty-five. And um, we have another meeting, I believe, on this coming Monday. And I feel like we're making progress, but we still have work and decisions to do. And then um, the documents that. Gets us our funding for fiscal year twenty-five is called the L-two. And this week I have been working with the county tax accountant to get ours completed. And I have provided um, the chair with. An original set of documents that will need signature when the time is appropriate. And that has to be submitted absolutely no later than September fifth. But we should not wait until that day. We need to get it in as soon as possible. And um, I think that's all.
Okay, um, I have a question. The insurance, uh, did the almost ninety thousand, did that include the Great American um supplemental policy that we had last year or?
This is just the I-CRIM.
Rusty Boss?
Can you reveal any details about liability coverage? Did they increase, decrease? Did they drop? Certain items like they, like the uh, employee coverage?
Um, we received that documentation late yesterday and. I do not have information because I have not um, had time to do that. But I do believe next week I will hopefully be able to speak with the broker and we can identify. Where we are potentially shorter, the changes that have been made.
Uh, to us first, so Rusty Robinson?
So who, who are you saying, I think you said from Hartfield, Hartfield? Hartwell?
Hartwell.
Um, somebody could come and give a presentation?
That's what I'd like to have happen.
So that's something we need to get set up before, I mean, for the September regular meeting?
I think we'll need a special meeting.
Okay.
Before September.
And Hartwell is that, I mean, that's uh, the broker, the insurance broker? Okay.
I think they even asked if they were willing to do that, but I'm assuming they would and receive. I think what would be helpful for the board.
I think that'd be very helpful for the board. So that'd be nice if we could get that in.
Rusty Allen?
Uh, going back to the restoration for Apple, Post Falls. What, assuming, I think I heard was a carpeting and the furniture were the pending items primarily. What's the targeted, what's the expected opening date? Obviously, things can fall behind, but what, there must be some kind of a estimated date at this point. We have something. You can, and are we getting it out to the public at least on our website? I didn't vote there in a second, but. Those are my two questions.
Interim Director?
We do have information on each of those pages, locations on our website. We are probably looking at October. I would just say late October for Apple. Um, because once all of the work is done, we still have to bring in the shelving and re. Align all of the books. So there's still about two to three weeks after we get the building back before we can open. And then I would say for Post Falls, we're probably looking at the end of November.
Thank you.
Rusty Boss?
On the insurance, uh, from I-CRIM to that. Renewal come directly from I-CRIM or is. Hartwell broker, are they in the middle of it right now or? Anyway, I just wanna make sure Hartwell knows about what it is. Maybe they can provide an analysis. Person.
Interim Director?
The original document was sent directly to me. And it has since been shared with Hartwell and so they are in the communication with.
Okay. Alright, are there any further questions? Okay, well, then we will move on to the next section. Is discussion of fiscal year twenty-five budgets. Um, so first, I know there have been questions concerning um, alleged extra five hundred thousand from the state. Uh, for the current fiscal year. And I've asked the interim director to summarize what this entails so that the public understands. Uh, what the deal is with that money.
I have been in touch with the county um, regarding this. Money that we supposedly have and um, what I would like to say is that on the um. Budget, we. Levy for property taxes, or we are allowed a certain amount of property tax. And then there are more than three, but I think the primary three things that affect how much property tax we get is. The property tax reduction for homeowners. There's an additional property tax relief that they get. And then there is the homeowner property tax relief. And so all of those things get processed through the tax system. And then that usually means the amount of property tax we are, makes us short. So then the. State will give us replacement funds to make us whole. So the funds that we received and that are being discussed. They are in lieu of these property taxes that we did not get. They are not in addition to, they are not new monies. They are simply making our budget whole. And um, there are specific statutes if people want to investigate this, then it's Idaho Code sixty-three dash seven. That talks about these um, funds. And right now, no action is required by our board. We are neither. Need to reopen the budget nor do we need to allocate those funds because they were already allocated when the budget was created.
Thank you for saying that. Uh, trustee boss?
Yeah, I would just add simply that the legislature. Benevolently decided to give every, last year, everybody, all the homeowners a tax break. And they passed legislation, which is the statute, that the state would pay money. So they're gonna take it out of the state's pocket to pay us instead of us having to take it all out of our pocket. And we pay income tax or pay tax anyway to the state so they can pay this. But that's what they're doing because they're so benevolent. And it's just confused, but it's still the same property tax. It's just all your bill for lower and the state's for earning the extra and. We have no requirement to do anything different with that money. It still comes from the county.
Okay, um, so if we were to raise, I don't remember what line it was, the insurance line. Uh, up to ninety thousand, um, did staff have a suggested bet?
Um, I do have a couple of recommendations. One, so first of all, the insurance line is item seventy-three. And then I recommend taking two thousand dollars out of line forty-four, which is the equipment line. So that would be reduced to eighty-eight thousand. And then line fifty-one, which is post falls, uh, repair and maintenance. I recommend taking three thousand out of that, similarly to what we did for Apple.
Which lines?
Um, that is line fifty-one. And that's where the five thousand dollars could be needed.
So three thousand out of that one?
Rusty Boss?
This, this is kind of pointless to go over this because first of all. I-CRIM just went and raised, it looks to me like they raised our premium. To ninety thousand dollars from about. Well, it was less than fifty thousand dollars. I don't know that we want I-CRIM. And I wanna find out what the other options are. But the reason we had higher insurance last year, the fifty. Two thousand was because we had to buy the supplement for the. Employee coverage. We're still gonna have to buy that, I assume, but we don't even know. But. I don't wanna, I, I am absolutely not going to approve anything on changing stuff until we find out what I-CRIM is providing. And why the heck they're raising our. What are, uh, what, yeah, what are they providing and why are they raising the premium so much?
Uh, Rusty Allen?
So when we're discussing a thing like that, um, we're discussing the budget in a way, I don't. If I understand it correctly, not necessarily who the provider is at the moment. So if we're strictly using that as a way to make a budget estimate. And that will be probably, hopefully the high number we go with is ninety thousand. It doesn't necessarily mean, if I understand correctly, we have to do a high one.
So the suggested uh, reduction uh, to forty-four and fifty-one, um. Uh, well, forty-four seems like asking that, which would be easy to do, but it. Uh, we believe that Post Falls will not need as much maintenance and.
Um, I mean, I think we're operating under that assumption, whether it is good or bad one. Um, you know, we, it'll be, the paint will be new, the fixtures will be new. And with that doesn't include a massive. You know, HVAC issue, which we would need all of that money for. Um, but I think looking at our building as being sort of. Made whole and made fresh, I think it's safe to take it out of Post Falls. And that discussion was made in conjunction with our facilities coordinator. Um, he believes that's a fair assumption.
Uh, Rusty Boss?
So I was led to believe that Post Falls was uh, just right on the cliff, right on the edge of having the HVAC. You know, go bad. And I don't know whether we're gonna put a new one in or that's what I thought. And I thought that was put into here, but would that be? Instead of repairs and maintenance, would that be some other capital assets that that would come out of? Can we set the HVAC issue aside and just assume this repairs and maintenance is just. Fixing things in the building that.
Post Hall page back is getting rolled, that would be a capital expense. And that was, you somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty, probably. In our system. I think if this is maybe, if we have an issue, then we go. My head, post hall at this time, I think is, will be okay.
Yeah, so two thousand isn't gonna have a big impact on it, two hundred thousand dollar expense. Of fading works. Rusty Boss?
Can we get this broker? Or the insurance, uh, Hartwell, to give us a report or estimate of what we're gonna have to have for supplement? Can we get that in a week? Is, I, I am not gonna vote to approve this the way it is. I don't have any idea what's going on with I-CRIM and I. Halfway expected they were just gonna drop us, but. We need to know what's going on with insurance.
Interim Director?
As I said, we received the um, more detailed documentation yesterday afternoon. So I do not know at what speed the broker works at. This was not something that, he and I, we don't have a relationship yet. So this would need, be me making a phone call and asking him that and seeing where we fit into his work.
Rusty Boss?
Make a motion that we uh, get the. Work with the broker and get a updated estimate within a week of. Insurance for this coming year.
Uh, okay, so it's a move that we work with the broker and. Uh, what was the rest of that?
Work with the broker to obtain an estimate. Or CLN insurance or FY twenty-five. Within a week.
Okay, uh, let me know if I'm missing something. Uh, has a move that we work with the broker to obtain. An estimate for CLN insurance for fiscal year twenty-five uh, within a week. Uh, interim director?
I don't understand what that statement means. Um, what is an estimate? Are you asking for detailed information about things that might have been dropped or things that might have been increased? Are you asking for an explanation? To me, an estimate is like getting a quote. And we already have the renewal policy in front of us. We just don't, we haven't read it yet. So can you better explain what you mean by that?
Rusty Boss?
Yeah, it's an estimate of what it is to, what it takes to make our insurance policy whole. What has been dropped out. And then what supplemental coverages would be needed and what the estimated cost is. I'm not saying to get a quote, just get to get us an estimate and. Find out from commercial companies what an estimate would be, not necessarily a quote.
Uh, Rusty Robinson?
Um, I actually was going to, at the um, number sixteen, set special and regular meeting dates. Was going to ask to have a representative, representative from Hartwell to meet with us. When he could, as soon as he could, and have it set up by staff. When everybody could. I think that's a more appropriate place for this discussion. And not the actual budget. We're kind of nitpicking. We're getting away from the numbers. And I think the better place for this discussion to be is. Number sixteen, set special and regular meeting dates.
I would agree with that. I'm not sure that uh, it's appropriate. To uh, deal with a third party and say you have to do this um, within a week. Trustee boss, oh, wait, Rusty Allen?
Is it unreasonable to ask, since you got the detailed documentation from them, can you like send that to us in a three or four or a standard or something so that we can look at it?
Interim Director?
I can, but I also don't want everyone's opinion on this. When, when in reality, all we need is the broker's opinion. But I think that could make it very messy very fast. But I think that could make it very messy very fast. Um, it is something that I have that I could send. Um. I don't know that that will help the situation.
Uh, trustee Allen?
If the ninety thousand dollars. Being budgeted for insurance is actually the highest number we've ever had for an insurance. And assuming that that number would give us adequate coverage. Just feel like. We're doing our budget right now. We're not, we're not working on selecting an insurance carrier. And so. If that looks like a safe number to work with, um. We're, we're looking at that differently than let's say other items on the budget. Um, we're scrutinizing one line. Um, I did think that that's, if that's an adequate figure. I don't necessarily care who the carrier is at some point in the future.
Trustee boss?
It's completely inadequate. Because. I crimp last year was charging us half that. And we didn't have the other coverage for the employee policy and we had to go add it and that's why the price, our amount went up. If we don't have it and we also don't have something else they've decided to drop like last year, they dropped their liability from three million to half a million. What else have they done? Are they completely inadequate? Is that only gonna be? Half of what we have to pay because we have to go pay another ninety thousand to commercial. Uh, I don't know, they're gonna have to pay two hundred thousand for insurance. I'd like to get an answer of some sort from. From, and, and I think it's urgent before we approve the, the, uh, budget. And that's why I don't want to wait for a special meeting. I would like. A realistic. Analysis summary of some sort from the broker saying, yeah, you're missing. These things and it's probably gonna cost you an extra forty thousand to go get it or. Uh, I, I think we need that before we approve the budget.
Trustee Robinson?
If there was a, a drastic change in the, um, policy, do you think that the broker would have mentioned it in some way?
I can see it.
Interim director?
I would assume so, but again, I only talked with I crimp and forwarded the document to our broker. I have not talked directly to our broker about this. We have had it less than twenty-four hours, so I do not have that ideal things.
Okay, uh, so in an ideal world, uh, we'd have all that information now, but I don't know how long it's gonna take to get it and we do have a deadline for the budget. So. Unless there's further discussion, uh, we do need to deal with this motion and then get to, uh, the budget. Itself, uh, so it has been moved that we hold with the broker to obtain an estimate for CLN insurance. For fiscal year twenty-five within a week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, the nays have it and the motion is, uh, not carried. Uh, so back to the budget. Uh, what do you guys think about the proposed? Uh, changes in lines forty-four, fifty-one, and seventy-three? Something broken. Okay, uh, all right, it sounds like a consensus is fine with that, so we'll take out. Uh, reduce forty-four, line forty-four by two thousand. Fifty-one by three thousand and add five thousand to line seventy-three. Uh, trustee Allen?
Prefer, prefer general comments on the budget? Okay, because there was a lot of. Public discussion about closing on certain days in a week. I did go back and look at the patient counts or provided. For the different days of the week. And Sunday. At height, I didn't, did have the fewest patrons. But it was open, obviously, for a few number of hours. And the rate of the patrons per hour for Sundays. Was the lowest though. Uh, compared to the rest of the week, so it wasn't statistically significant. But the rate or number of patrons per hour were the lowest on Sunday and Monday. So, um, I don't know that, uh. The, the schedule was provided to us. For budgetary reasons, we don't typically get involved in actually, I don't think setting hours. That's more operational. I think as long as. Staff stays within the budget. Established or whether it was, um. Two ways calculated in that and employees salaries. I don't know that the hours and days a week are set stone at this point. I just think that, uh, we use the. Days of the week and the schedules. As a budgetary decision based upon what staff gave us. And we approved it, so we basically. Approved the budget based upon certain number of hours. I don't know that we're necessarily locking them into any particular schedule as long as they stay within the budgetary deadlines we got here. This one that went up.
Mr. Robinson? Uh, so. Interim director?
I, um. Uh, I have some difficulty with what was just said because I feel like. That is now putting staff to be the ones to make the decision to close on Sundays. Because we do not have enough staff. With our current budget limitations to be open all of those days. So. While I think it is a, a fine comment that the trustee made. I do think it is putting unnecessary burden on staff. To make that final decision. When we've gone through the data over and over about what we need to do to meet our budgetary goals. And I don't see that we can be open Sundays and all the other days we promised. And. Stay within the budget because we, it just can't happen. The numbers have worked, have been worked repeatedly.
Yeah, I think the trustees already agreed, uh, with the, the suggestion and the assessment, so. Uh, anyone have any other? Changes or questions about the budget? Mr. Robinson?
I, I guess I missed on, um, where the one point five percent went. Did we all agree that that was not a? An issue or a possibility?
I think that that might have been while you were.
Well. Oh, that makes sense. Um. I would like to know if any trustee is going to try to take that one percent away. Like. Before we actually finalize this.
And last, um. Major revelation came to light, I, I was, uh. I was in agreement, agreement with one percent. Uh, trustee boss?
I, I don't plan to change that. One percent, but I am completely bothered by the, right now, I'm, I'm not at all ready to accept this. Um. The carry forward estimate as of Jim on the last page, three of three. This was a. Real issue last time. At the, I mean, at the last meeting, I was concerned about it. We're down to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. I think is what that number was, um. I'm a little mixed up on this sheet here, but. We don't have two months. We don't even have one month left and if insurance is gonna cost more or if the taxes didn't come in. And we don't have a financial statement backing this up. You know, I, I. The, that was all contend. Me approving it was contending or, uh, can. In, uh. Expectation of. These numbers being right and it's all depending on what came in July twenty-fifth from the county. And the updated version of this carry forward. So. I thi- I think. We're not ready, I certainly am not ready to approve this. I absolutely will not approve it today.
Trustee Allen?
So is it the carrying forward? Once it's in question, you know, are to approve this or is that? Is that, is that a known number or is that still? Being looked up, I don't know.
Trustee boss?
It, it's an unknown number. It was an estimate based on the business manager back in June. Putting down the numbers of what it looked like. We would get for the second tax payment. In July, July twenty-fifth. I called the, uh. Attack the county office and they gave me the number. They gave me a. Email, I've got it written down, but. I don't, I don't know how it fits in with this estimated. Sheet that was worked out. The number is low, is, is lower than what we've had before. And. Uh. Or at least than what it was last year. And I think we need confirmation on what this is and that's what I expected to see in this financial. Statement that should have been an agenda item and I think we need it. Within a week. So that we can make a decision like this. That's why I was asking for it, so we can know what the. Carry forward is. It doesn't help to base it on what it was. In January when we got a three fifths payment. It's this smaller payment in July that is critical.
Trustee Robinson?
I feel like any entity like this, numbers are gonna be jumping around like crazy. Every month. Always, because there's, there's literally unknowns. Aerial. That's a term in math. Uh. What I get confused on is that. One, I'll say week, because I don't say month because we usually have. Meetings weekly. One week. It's complained that. The carry forward is just way too high. The next week it's complained that it's way too low. And I. I just don't. I'm having a hard time following what certain trustees are looking for exactly. Besides, um, consistency and you're not gonna find that in an entity like this.
Trustee Campbell?
So I also am frustrated. With. Not having it down black and white. The revenue, the carry forward. And then the expenditure so that. We understand and know. Very well. Where the money is coming from. And where the money is going. And so I. I'm just saying, I, I'm thoroughly frustrated. With these numbers. And not, not saying why we came to those numbers.
Uh, trustee Allen?
What is the deadline for adoptive budget? What is, what is the? What is our final deadline? What's the latest we can go to adopt? Are you still adopting as the last step?
Interim director?
I believe it's August twenty-seventh. Because. Um, that is the date by which. The board would need to ask for a seven day extension. And if we don't do it by then, then we will not have that name for next year.
Uh, trustee Robinson?
And it looks like the twenty-second, we have the, um, budget approval meeting already set, correct?
Trustee boss?
So. I'm not looking at numbers that are jumping around and variables. What I was upset about in the June meeting. Is that. All year long or since last fall, when I asked for it, we started. Having this carry forward worksheet presented and it, most of this year, it was showing nine hundred thousand dollars extra, eight hundred thousand dollars extra. And then. We got the new sheet. And all suddenly it's. Minus eight hundred and forty-six thousand. And no one could explain why one month it went, it, it jumped like one point six five million. High to low. And. That is the crux of it and the reason, and I figured this out last time and I told them. This, I told staff, it's because the January payment is about three fifths of our revenue. And you can't. Assume that same amount is coming all year long. That's why it looks like it's a high amount. It's the only carry forward that matters is after July twenty-fifth when we get the payment. And that one is showing we've got. We've hardly got two months. We've got. Like an extra week of. Money left. It's my minus eight forty-six for the two months, the two months. That maybe is as much as a million, so. It isn't just that I'm worried about variables. I want to know an accurate carry forward as of. September. Thirty, when the year ends, what we'll have at the end of January before the first payment comes in next year. And the only way we can figure that out. Is to know the financials for this last month when the January payment came in. We have to get that. And not estimated like what we did last month. I was expecting. To have the actual numbers this month to verify for the budget.
Interim director?
The sheet that you're talking about that had the big swing, it was fully explained at last meeting. That our business manager used a different format. And what you all were given was what the admin staff looks at to predict the next several months. Whereas before, the board was given monthly snapshots. So that was explained and that's why there was such a big swing. So I also just, I have to keep saying like, we do not have a business manager. We cannot just relearn those skills overnight. Like, I, what you're asking for is not necessarily something that can be given right now. Our jobs are all very different and not interchangeable. And we do not have a business manager. We have a treasurer that has volunteered, but she also has commitments. So unless. Someone else is gonna come in and run these reports. I'm not entirely sure how to meet your expectations at this point. In addition to then being forced to do insurance right now and staffing and other things, like you're gonna have to prioritize. What you want.
Trustee Allen?
I'm appreciating the staffing shortage to get these numbers. Is there a possibility of hiring a CPA to come in and get us? Not, not regularly, but just to get us up to speed. On exactly what it, if that's the biggest thing we need is a carry forward balance right now because. It should be where we had plus the life payment we got. And then we would know that we have a adequate cushion or not. As, uh. It's an extra way, it's a slush fund, which is just to know that we've got these, I believe, that is sixty days of revenue in the bank. That carry us on, so would hiring. A temp agency slash CPA. To come in and produce at least that much information for us. I don't doubt be satisfied to the other trustees and. If they're working with interim director.
Uh, interim director?
You can do that, but again, then we're going to have to train someone that we don't know how to train. So it's like. There's, there's like a minimization of the skills that our business manager had. That can't just be whipped out by someone off the street, so. I am willing to work with our treasurer because I've already worked with her this week. I think that would be the path going forward. I have already reached out to other. Um, financial professionals and I have not gotten any, um. Help for someone who can be willing to step in at this time, so. That's not looking like a possibility because everyone is trying to close out their fiscal year right now.
Okay, um, so we have just a couple of minutes left for this discussion, uh. Are you guys thinking that we want to vote on it today or on the twenty-second? Trustee Allen?
My thought is, um. If. Our treasurer can work with staff to produce a report in a timely fashion that we. We punt and table this approval on the budget today. And schedule it for a different day with more information in hand so that we're not making a. Inadequately informed decision on the budgets, but it's a big deal. If we don't know what number we're working from. It's difficult to. Say. Uh. It's approved, so I don't think I could approve it. Since we're missing too much information to make a reasonable decision.
Trustee Robinson?
I don't necessarily think we're missing. Important, important information, uh, but I'm completely fine with, um. Don't. Uh, voting on it today.
Okay, and trustee Campbell?
Oh, um. I'm open to voting it next week if we're waiting next week, nothing.
Okay.
Sure.
Uh, yes.
Code thirty-three.
Code thirty three, twenty seven, twenty five, there's a requirement that the trustees of each library district will prepare, publish a notice, a summary statement for the budget. And so if we're going to have another meeting, then we might want to consider anything related to that. And there's, there's also the ability to accept additional money that you receive later. So any part of the hesitation to approve a budget is related to accepting additional money, there's a process to do that after the budget's adopted later in the year.
Okay, Interim Director?
We've already published our budget and have already had our hearing. And as long as we are not increasing the amount that we are asking for property taxes, we do not have to go through that process again.
Just Boss?
I wanted to hear from the treasurer, but I thought I heard earlier from this interim director that you were working on this and you just didn't have it done quite yet. Is this something possible you can do? I can take a stab, because I pretty much know, have learned what goes into it, but then it would be maybe handing it to you to help get the right numbers. But is that something you're working on that you could get in the next week?
Treasure?
I was actually going to wait and bring it up when we got to line item twelve, because I do think it also relates back to that by the ring process. But I'm happy to speak into it now. I just would like to bring it to the trustee's attention that this is a very complex and time consuming process to close out a month and reconcile the books and give you the numbers that you are needing. I do start a job full time next week. So I'm more than happy to work with the interim director and the administrative assistant, and will continue to give as much as I possibly can. But I do think it really goes back to understanding how complex this is and how much work they have right now going on. And that it isn't necessarily as interchangeable as you guys might think it is. And also because you want to do it right. And so I can do the best that I can and would be happy to work with them. But I really would recommend that we consider opening up, taking off the freezing for many reasons, also for this director coming in. If he is starting September fifteen, essentially, he's going to be behind, we're going to be behind almost a quarter. It would be July, August, September. He would be coming in without possibly a director or a business manager. And that would be something he would want to be hiring on, as much as I think that's really great. And it would be something I would appreciate as well. I would also, if it was me, as coming in as a director, would appreciate knowing that there was a business manager already established and wouldn't be so far behind in catching up. Because that would put us behind a quarter, and then we have the new year that starts in October. So we also have to close out the books, reopen the books, not including benefits and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of things to consider. That's my recommendation.
Thank you. All right, so we are done with that section. Unfortunately, about moving a budget. And we will now be going on break for fifteen minutes. It's three fifty, and this meeting will come back to order. Our first our first item is discussion of minors card policy. And just Boss?
Oh, the issue was basically with the minor card policy using it the way it was. There was really only three levels that you could open up that would not allow minors access to the adult section where there are adult books. And they were given open access, which was just as a, as another option, which was the same as an adult card. And I just think that's completely not an option for us anymore. The statutes, I have other copies here, I did hand them out, but the statutes now in the new part eighteen dash fifteen seventeen B says in three A that you have to take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to harmful materials, minors. So just giving them a card that lets them go, you know, and get their cookbooks and encyclopedias and other things and go into the adult section. That's that's not permitted by the Idaho law anymore. And it actually says further down in three, in fifteen seventeen three B, that you need to relocate, libraries need to, the board trustees need to relocate material harmful to minors in an area with adult access only. So the legislature used those words, those three words, adult access only. And we don't have that in CLM. If we had it where all the books were put into adult access only that were either from the children's section, minor section, or from the adult section, they were put into this adult access, I have no problem with giving a minor access card that lets them run the library. And I think that's the only way to comply with the law. So I would add a, in four P, I would add a item D down here that basically said.
Which version you're working on?
The board draft seven eighteen, the only one that we, that we approved. Or at least the draft approved. I would add a a new D, a new item here, D. And I would call it minor open access card. It would have to be a different colored card, and it would let them go anywhere in the library, but we would have to put a time constraint that it's not available until we create this adult access only. Like, I guess I'll put that as an introduction, but I would add a section G, and then I would do this this policy that I passed out. But basically, I just introduce it like we said. It refers to the Idaho statutes that say that you have to create a adult access only area. And then it describes what the adult access area is. It would have to be, we don't want to make it expensive, a walkable room, if you got it, a closet, maybe a cabinet. It can't be a glass cabinet, can't be observable from the outside. And the only ones that can get a key to open it up are those with adult cards. You can call adult open access, maybe it would just be a regular adult card. And those would get issued to patrons over eighteen. You'd have to make sure the younger ones really were eighteen. And they would have to go to the front desk and request a key and show their card. You can't just have keys hanging up there for any children to go get and use, so I would think you wouldn't want to do that. We don't have to go through the details of this, but this is what I'm suggesting how you would make an adult access only area. You could have a, if we had card locks, a wireless card, you could use that. I don't want to make the expense of having everybody do it, just a checked out key. If you had cameras, security cameras, you could have a camera there to make sure that anybody's doing, that goes in it is is an adult. And then the content basically is all the books in the library that meet the definition of Idaho statutes eighteen fifteen thirteen through seventeen B. So that's the obscene materials in fifteen fourteen. So harmful to minors materials in eighteen fifteen fifteen, and then I don't know why they gave another definition in the new eighteen fifteen seventeen, or fifteen seventeen B, but there's yet a third definition. So you just, any book that meets those definitions, whether it's in the adult section or anywhere, you know, or in the children's section, wherever it is, if it's in the library, it needs to go in that cabinet, then we're free to let minors run the library. And that's what I am proposing.
Just your answer?
So a part of that statute, it does say that minors have to take a, make reasonable steps, take reasonable steps to keep children away from the harmful for minors books. I think with the minor cards that we have right now, the three options we have right now, absolutely do that. And the fact that there's, it's clearly marked where children's section and adult section is. Some libraries are small, but you're still taking reasonable steps to do that. I want to know what, I wasn't at this meeting, but I did watch it. I want to know where the advice from the attorney went. Obviously, it just got thrown out. But the attorney's words, I believe, were overreach. So if we could just stop this right now and have our attorney address what was just said by the other trustee, I would appreciate that, especially since I wasn't at the last meeting. I did watch it, but I'd like to hear it in person from the attorney.
Objection, go ahead.
This is the first time I've seen this class of board. Well, it looks like that's a different footer, but the other base of class draft, maybe so and so.
Right, but he just verbalized a lot of it, so if you can talk on that.
I handed it out at the last meeting, but I don't.
The attorney could just repeat what he said at the last meeting that I wasn't here for, because I believe it was completely ignored and actually doubled down on it, so. And he, and the other trustee did just lay out his plan to have a locked room to put books in. So I'd really like to hear from the attorney, what he thinks about a locked room to put books in. That the trustee evidently thinks are, I think it was steamy sex scenes or steamy something. I watched the meeting, I was in here.
So the attorney did give advice last time, and we just haven't had an opportunity to deal with it yet. He did say number six, and I've got that highlighted here, that is something that needs to be dealt with. So it doesn't mean that we're ignoring it, just could mean that we haven't gotten to it. Anyway, attorney? What issues are?
I mean, I would really prefer to comment on the policy as a whole versus comments of the drafter of the policy, because although the comments of the drafter could be used in litigation, it's really what the policy says, I just have not had a chance to read it.
Well, it says that also.
What, I'm sorry. Says what?
I believe that the trustee was basically reading from the policy. But if you, if you need time to look at it, that's perfect. I can wait, we can all wait.
Jesse Allen?
I think the term was overreaching, and if I understood it correctly, we have to be careful that we don't restrict minors' access to the collection as a whole. We have to be much more specific. And I seeing it as two, two things. One is restricting physical access, walking up and grabbing some also adult romance book off the shelf, which can be done by minors. The law does appear to say we have to have an adult access only area. And it has to be somehow restricted for minors. So I kind of think that we have to look at something between. And this is going to be a long process, we can hopefully, hopefully it's not as long as the material acquisitions policy, but to get ourselves physical ability to move part of the collection to a restricted area in all the libraries and also to provide some kind of unlimited access with regard to the minors cards. I see that, but we cannot do something that's too sweeping and too broad brush when you say minors have only access to minors. And then rest of collections off limits, you can't do that. That's, that's going to be a guaranteed litigation issue. So that's, that's where I'm looking at, where we're starting from. And how do we actually get there right now? I don't know, but it's, it's a challenge.
Just Boss?
So I wrote this policy to address the concern our legal counsel gave us. Because the last time we approved the minor card, we did restrict under eighteen to only the teen, the youth, and those other areas that the card had. We took away the open access.
We didn't pass that policy, unless it.
We approved the draft. And we completed it. But the attorney, our, our legal counsel said we can't do that, because now we're cutting off minors who used to have access to all the library to go look at cookbooks, to go, you know, look at history section, all these other sections that aren't in the team. We will have cut them off, and we can't do that. So we, they did have access to it, and then we, the government, took it away from them. So that's what this is about. It's following Idaho law, taking those few books that we supposedly don't have any of and putting them in a cabinet that's locked that are harmful to minors, wherever they are in the library, put them in a locked cabinet. And then give minors open access to the whole library, but their card has to be different. They can't go up to the desk and ask for a key for that locked cabinet. That's all this policy is, is just letting them have full access to the library and all the material they used to have, except those harmful to minor materials that are defined in the Idaho law. They have to go in a locked cabinet, or they can go in a room or something. So that's, that's all this is.
Trustee Campbell?
So I believe that it's very important to protect our children. And I'm thinking though, because we've all had time to read what trustee boss has proposed. And there are certain things that I think could be problematic. And that is finding a room to put separate books in. Or locked or and even having like a security camera there, which I suggested, and and if you don't have a security camera, maybe just having somebody there monitoring the room. So what I was thinking on the code eighteen fifteen seventeen, where it says disseminating material harmful to minors, the defenses that there wouldn't be any prosecution against you is in any prosecution for disseminating material harmful to minors, it is an affirmative defense that if the minor, this is going down to be. The minor involved was accompanied by his parent or legal guardian or by an adult. And the adult represented that he was the minor's parent or guardian or an adult and signed a written statement to that effect. I know it talks about presence, but I don't know if we could do a theme where when we want our minor to have open access, that if there could be along attributed with that card, that there would be some kind of waiver by the parent, so that the parent will be responsible of having open access to CLM. I just was thinking of another way that perhaps that could be a solution to where the responsibility isn't on the institution to where, or the library would be prosecuted against for litigation, but that by a parent signing a waiver along with that card, saying that I am approving and permitting my child to have access, open access, that if there was any litigation involved, it would fall on the parent.
Just Boss?
I maybe misunderstood. In this case, the minor would have complete access to the library except that cabinet. And a cabinet can be. And a cabinet can be bought if we don't have a lockable cabinet in Einhurst or someplace. That's not an expensive thing to go get. So they would have complete access to the library. Just why would the library let them, let a minor unaccompanied by their parents or guardian? Why would you let them go to that cabinet just because they have something on their card? Why would the child want to go to that cabinet? And there's nothing wrong with the parent coming with the child and using the parent's card that's an adult open access, getting the key and going over with his child and going through the whole cabinet with the child there, with the, with, if the parent's there. So if the parent is showing, accompanying the minor, I, if, if it's not the guardian of, I, I don't know, maybe we'd have to have some legal recourse there.
And trustee Campbell?
And so I understand everything that you're saying there. Um, I guess, you know, we all want to protect our children from harmful material. Um, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about the feasibility of everything. I don't know what sixteen year old is going to have their parent with them all the time when they're in the library. You know, I certainly wouldn't want my mom or dad with me just because I'm sixteen years old. And then just, just, um, and then how would you, so then would you, how would you rate the books? You know, that would go into the cabinet. I mean, you'd have to, is the staff responsible then to go through every book and decide, okay, this does fall under that section that would be considered, considered harmful material? Yeah, I don't know. I, I'm just, I'm just thinking of what's feasible.
Trust your own say.
I'm, I'm definitely not for a locked cabin, a cabinet in the library. Uh, especially it, a camera focused on it to see what parent is taking their child over there to unlock that cabinet. I also don't think there's an issue if a, a teenager that has, given by their parent, access to the adult section. If they want to read an adult romance book, let them read an adult romance book. I don't think that certain books that, I don't think certain books are harmful to minors the way maybe some other trustees think are harmful to minors. I wouldn't think that a romance book would be harmful to minors. I've run into one, maybe they've changed, I don't know. But, uh, again, like a trustee Campbell said, who, who's deciding what's going into this lock box? Well, who would have to decide? The courts. Somebody would have to do a reconsider, a reconsideration form. And it would have to go, well, to the staff and then if it was challenged again, it would go to the courts. So you can't just put books in a locked cabinet, cabinets. It just can't, it, I find this so like such a crazy idea. I can't even wrap my head around it. I want to say like, like, let's call it for the vote. There's no vote. Um, I, I am very much against any locking any books up.
Trustee Anna?
Yeah, as cumbersome as it might be, I kind of think that it will be incumbent on library staff by that by all the materials that are considered harmful to minor in accordance with the definitions in the law, in the statutes. And so big lift, it's going to take a long time, but I think that's necessary to comply with the law. I also don't think that it's okay for parents to say it can have an adult card and access the material harmful to minors because the law doesn't allow for that. It does allow for them, I believe, again, I'm speaking in my understanding of the law. If a parent's present and wants to give the kid the kit, the book, if they won't even walk into the slot room and go through the stacks together, that's probably fine if they're accompanied by their parent or legal guardian. But we are tasked as a district to restrict materials harmful to minors from minors. That's not debatable and, and we, we don't have to do that. My understanding is we have to do that. And if we don't segregate the materials that are harmful to minors, then we can't provide access to the rest of the collection, which would be too overarching and, and as far as restricting the minors access. So I kind of think that we do need to identify all of them. It's going to take a long time. I understand that. It's not going to be an easy task and include incoming materials at the same time. But all the materials by Idaho's definition was considered harmful to minors and it needs to be sequestered or separated from the rest of the collection and restricted. How we get there, I don't know yet. And, and what would constitute a restricted area, I don't know that either. But I think that's kind of where we need to go, my, my understanding there.
Uh, interim director?
Um, I've said this before, but this, so in order to be considered harmful to minors, it has to pass a legal definition. It cannot be a personal judgment, a personal opinion, or a group of individuals' personal judgments on items. And to have library staff go through the catalog and look for kissing or sex or dating or love and immediately sequester those books, that is massively viewpoint discrimination. And you can have a book about love or dating and they're just simply holding hands or trying to understand what that relationship is. That is not harmful to minors. So in order for us to start adhering to what a few of the trustees are asking, each book would literally have to be read cover to cover for a judgment like that to be made. You cannot make it based on subject headings. And I also think we need to remember that we have taken reasonable measures already. As one of our trustees said, we have our age ranges identified in each library. We have our library cards for minors and our tiered access. And I do not believe in the same interpretation of the law that we have to then go that next step and literally put the books in our room. They first have to be legally declared that they belong there. And so far that has not happened.
Boss?
Well, this, this is no different than our, uh, our other policy on, uh, uh, withdrawal or reconsideration of material. It's up to the library staff to make it the best effort first to move them out of the, the minors areas. And we've already passed that and we've said that. The staff needs to make the best effort to do it. If a guardian or an adult files a relocation form that's in the policy, then that brings it to the, the library and first to the staff to read, to look at it. And if they decide to move it, it's fine. If they don't think it's worth or that it should be moved, then it goes, that policy has to go to the board and the board decides. So we've already got this way of doing it. The definitions are still there, just as much as they always were. It doesn't say anything about kissing. You know, I don't, I don't want to read it all here, but it's just those definitions that the Idaho law passed. And if you don't get it moved out the first time, the risk is some adult, they come along and file the form and then we have to do something. And if we don't, we have to, and, and we don't, uh, then it goes to court if we don't do anything and we have to pay, uh, or at risk of paying attorney fees and $250 fine. So let's, let's be careful and, you know, the, the, the law says the institution must take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to material harmful to minors. It doesn't say, but only in the minor section. It's in the library. And we have to provide an area, we have to move it to an area with adult access only. And this policy did not, is not, we can, it'll probably be another meeting. We, I'm not suggesting that it has to have a, a video camera or it has to be a separate room or it has to be that. I'm just saying, these are some options we can discuss. But I think the simple, least expensive is a lockable cabinet. So.
Trustee Anna?
Uh, I do wish to say that I think we should be proactive in restricting materials harmful to children, whether it's in the minors area or the rest of the collection. It should not be dependent upon people putting in reconsideration requests to do the librarian's job. And that is the library's best job to protect minors, there's a law. And it shouldn't be a reactive thing because some whiny parent says, hey, look at this book. It should be the library's staff's job to find those books either in the collection now or as they're being purchased. And they shouldn't be getting purchased anymore. Uh, that was my first thought. The second one is, is since there's continuous claims that we don't have materials harmful to minors, uh, how about, I'll challenge this step. I'll find a half a dozen books if you'd like and present them at the next meeting and say, here, I can prove to you that we do have materials harmful to minors in the collection, accessible to minors, and therefore we must take steps. That won't be a statistical sample, but it'll be a sampling, a few books and say, here, I'll prove it to you. Now we do need to do something. So I, I think that we know there's, there's books in there that are material harmful to children or minors in the collection. We know that for a fact. It's like saying there's no bad scenes in, in some movie somewhere. There's a bunch of sex scenes in a lot of the movies. So I, I really think that we need to do, if necessary, I'll prove if necessary, there is some material harmful to children or minors in the collection. If that's what you need to push us over the bar and say, okay, now we've got to create a section or an area. But so, and those are my two thoughts on it.
Okay, um, could the audience whisper more quietly, please?
Can I ask a question? Can our trustees talk more quietly instead of raising their voice?
Was I too loud?
Um, I think we were getting louder as the audience got louder.
Some people were too soft. I tried to get close. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to slip.
All right. Uh, who was, and trustee Allison?
Uh, if, if a trustee is going to bring in books to, um, to show that they're honor, I assume he's meaning from the adult section.
I can't comment.
Okay.
But I'm going to.
I would, I would ask that that trustee doesn't bring the books into a meeting, but actually fills out a, what's it called? Reconsideration or material.
Relocation.
A relocation form on each book. That way we're not just looking at a cover or a snippet of a, a paragraph, but so we can actually see it, how it would be presented to our staff or us. Um, if somebody actually was filling one out for real. Otherwise, because in the past, we've had people bring in books and just like hold them up and say, this book here or it doesn't belong here. But we're like, okay, um, I see a cartoon on the front. I mean, it's like, or they read a sentence out of a book. So if a trustee is going to do this to prove his point, which would be great, please do it the right way so that we can actually do it the right way. And we can, we can, um, absorb it and learn how, how it's done, how the forms are filled out, how the staff has to look at it and, and then it'll make more sense to everybody, I think. So that's what I would ask of the trustee.
Um, so the forms are supposed to be filled out by a parent or guardian, but I'm sure that he could bring a list of what was in the book. Anyway, trustee Campbell?
So I would like to hear from our attorney on, on the statute as far as, um, if it's black and white. I mean, I, I want to follow the law. And if it means an adult access only, you know, I'm, I'm for that because I want to protect children. And, um, but I want to hear from our attorney as this ruling here, how you would interpret it, please.
Yeah. So this will be the last comment because we're over time for this section.
A ruling, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to track exactly where I'm commenting on specific ruling or policies.
Were, were you asking if the adult access only was legal?
Yeah, the policy asked, I mean, this was just, what is it? Section eighteen, is that it? Chapter eighteen. Dash fifteen seventeen B and it's under three A through C. If you have that, there's a page number twenty five on the copy from the C plus.
Yeah, three A through C is the cause of action section against the library. It's interesting if you read section two, it, uh, section two is a section that the attorney general or a local prosecutor would have jurisdiction to seek an injunction against the library if they promote material harmful to minors. That definition is incredibly broad and also includes gives or make available in it. Uh, section three relates to a cause of action by a parent against the library. And so it's a different section. It only uses the terms give or make available, which is good because promoting would be quite, quite the challenge for a library because of the broad definition. And so in three, as well as the criminal code, there's an affirmative defense built in that allows a parent to say, I was the parent and I gave the material harmful to minors to the child. And so I predict that a court would say, well, since we're carving this out of the criminal law, the, we're likely carving this out of the civil prohibition as well. And what the legislature was trying to do is ensure that minors were not acquiring material harmful to minor without their parents. Right? And so then I would say, okay, that's probably intent of the law. So what's the most narrowly crafted, uh, least restrictive means to accomplish that compelling governmental interest that minors aren't harmed in? And so whatever we propose, I say we, uh, play devil's advocate with it and try and figure out, is there a less restrictive way we can accomplish this? And if there's a budgetary means why we can't or it's impossible, then we analyze that and rule it out. And that way we create a record in case we end up in litigation related to whatever policy we end up with. And so we would just be open minded about, okay, look, some people don't like this draft, fine. Let's walk through it and figure out, is there a, a less restrictive way we can go about this? While we maintain the, the gravitas of this whole idea, which is actually to promote education and promote literacy and promote access to materials. It's not a discussion about restricting access to material, right? And so we want to be laser, razor sharp, laser focused on the restriction part so we can maximize the access part.
All right. Uh, so then we are moving on to our next section, which is the session of Form nineteen twenty four featuring email regarding library filters. Uh, interim director, do you have something to say first, or should we just bring Mark Fosstrup, IT guy?
Yes, I just, we're going to have Mark come out, who's our IT coordinator. And then if there's specific questions that are needed to be answered, that would be helpful in either, um, conversation.
So, uh, a couple of months back, I forget the exact timeframe, there was a question on whether, um, our library filters, uh, worked already. And, um, in investigating that, uh, we have not been able to replicate, uh, the situation. Now, now that's not to say that it did not happen, but we have not been able to recreate it as such. Um, and I have talked with the, uh, the patron in question. And if, if there's video or if there's other, um, proof of exactly how it was done, I would certainly look into it because we do want to ensure that, um, that pornographic and other materials are not getting through our filter. So, um, that's kind of the update on that. I do know at the time that this first happened, um, I was, so we did not get back to the patron immediately, um, which was part of the initial communication failure. But, um, I'm happy to answer any questions or comment on how the filter works uh, to, um, to kind of, um, explain how, how it does work and detect the internet access here.
Interim director?
I was just wondering if you could explain our filter and like, does it meet industry standards and the body?
Yes. So our, uh, our filter operates at the, uh, at the gateway, the entrance where data comes. Yes, so our, uh, our filter operates at the, uh, at the gateway, the entrance where data comes into our network. Uh, it filters for, uh, content at that level. Um, it is a product called Cisco Umbrella, which is one of the leading industry standards uh, for filtering and for security management, um, to keep data at the end of the network clean. Um, and yet, uh, it is very flexible and configurable. We do have it set to, uh, filter, um, content in sites that would fall under adult or pornography or other attempts that, um, would not be appropriate to you on a library computer screen. That answer question?
Mr. Foss?
Well, I wanted to get a little bit more technical on the filter. Um, my understanding of these, because I've worked with them, is they usually would have a parallel path. You have a, the higher, the standard speed coming through, and so, so the data gets split. And on this other path, it's checking to see if anything on the blacklist is there, or if those words are there, whatever. And if it finds it, it shuts off the main path. So I think there's a timing, uh, setting. So how quickly it shuts it off, how long it lasts. But what I understood is the, the young man was able to go to that site and quickly get it or something, and maybe he got it before this two second delay or something found it. Is, is that possible? Is, is, or is there adjustments on the timing that you could work with?
Um, so the filter works a little bit differently than that. I understand that that is certainly one way that it works. Uh, the way that the Cisco Umbrella works is it, uh, uses a DNS resolver. Um, so the, uh, as soon as request is made, uh, we have, uh, some virtual machines, uh, that run the DNS resolver and utilizes the umbrella, um, security, that's provided by Cisco. And if it returns back on the DNS request that it is, uh, not an appropriate site, then it will not even start to stream the data back. It will either, uh, show a screen that shows that it is blocked, or if it is an HTTPS site that has encryption, uh, it just won't let the site come up at all.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm not sure if this would be a question for, but, um, in these situations when somebody is, uh, lack of better terms, hacking in, um, is there any kind of penalty on that person? If they're, they know they're doing something they're not supposed to be doing?
Um, well, then, then I, I think that's part of a good, um, usage policy. Um, we, we certainly want to have technology in place. Um, if you have a motivated teenager, and I'm sure we all know one, um, that is, um, doing their best to get around, uh, that's where the other part, uh, comes in with, um, with staff just keeping an eye on things. And, um, Admiral Lindsey can speak more than that, because that's more of a, uh, traditions and just, uh, library staff directing, um, but you, you have the technology. But I think that staff being actively involved is, uh, is definitely a, a, a worthwhile.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just unfollowed a little bit. So, um, these filters are for, for all users, right? Not just minors. I mean, uh, an adult isn't supposed to be able to pull up porn on the library computer, right?
That is correct. The way we have it right now is that all of the libraries, uh, I'm, all of the workstations in the libraries and all the libraries in the district, um, all the data that comes in goes to this filter, both staff and patron. Uh, the wireless access that we provide, both on the staff wireless and the patron wireless app, it goes through that as well. Uh, so staff have the same level of filtering on their workstations. The software does have the ability to do an administrative overpass if there is a truly legitimate staff reason. And one of those reasons is if I get that request, hey, this site really is fine, can you please, uh, whitelist it? Um, I need to be able to see it to verify that. Um, and very occasionally, especially if our website is completely brand new, this software, if it's a brand new website, well, oftentimes blocked because it hasn't had a chance to categorize it. The Wallace Music Festival is a perfect example of that. The site was one day old and it was being blocked because it hadn't been categorized yet. So I got a request to whitelist it, which I did.
Mr. Foss?
Well, so I didn't understand, or maybe I didn't hear it in the answer. Is there any adjustment you can make on this to make it, uh, faster or maybe overkill or something? And, and it's maybe adjusted the other way now?
Um, I can certainly look into that. I don't have a definitive answer to give you right now because, um, once again, the, 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 I, I did try to beat the filter myself when this first reported, I haven't been able to do it. But, um, I can certainly look and see what settings there could be adjusted. Um, basically, um, what can be adjusted is which workstations you might want to have a different filtering level. Um, we just have it set across the district at the same, because we want to ensure, um, consistent, consistency. Um, but there are, there are things that, uh, we could certainly be looked into. I'm not sure timing is one of them. But it can be looked at.
Inon Director?
I think I want to try to answer part of your question. So we have our internet use safety policy, which lists the violations of people. And one of those violations is accessing pornography or other prohibited content. And so if we have someone who continues to do that, then their privileges would be revoked. Um, I don't think we're at that level yet, but if documentation would be kept and then they would not be able to use the library anymore.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Okay, so, um, in regards to Mary's public comment, um, in regards to what you just said, as far as, uh, if you, you know, were able to get around it and pull up the porn, um, he would be safe, right? If he, if he's gonna make a video to show you how he did it?
In, in this specific, one specific case, yes, to demonstrate how it would be specifically worked around, yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Well, just a little con, two comments. One is I find it interesting that prohibiting certain content and having electronic censorship is okay, but physical woke steam limited, so that's not okay. Um, but I would also like to say that if the person that complains and brought this to the attention of staff felt slighted by the former director, at least for myself, I apologize. You shouldn't be penalized or made to feel uncomfortable bringing a possible, um, exposure to the, uh, internet system. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't have been thrown out as negative to you. We're trying to demonstrate if that was the case, that there was a flaw, there was a problem with the system, and that should not be seen in a negative fashion. So my apologies, I can't speak for the whole board.
Inon Director?
And just to clarify, so what normally happens is, um, and I don't even know how this original complaint rose up, but we do have like our contact us email where people can submit complaints. And we have, um, our website where they can also do that. And usually it is myself or the director or the manager, depending on the level of the situation, who makes an immediate response. And it is quite unfortunate that that didn't happen in this situation. And it's quite unfortunate that it rose to the level where we are right now. So I also apologize for that. But typically, complaints are handled at the staff level as quickly as possible.
I think there are no further comments or questions. Uh, thank you very much for your, your time and your expertise. I appreciate the questions being answered. All right, so next we will go on to, uh, discussion of authority to fill open positions. Um, so I understand that the hiring fees would benefit CLN in the longer run, um, but it's three or two hundred on the staff. So I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, i- is there someone within the organization that could be moved up temporarily to business manager? And then, um, someone else could be moved into that position? Or we, the higher attempt for the other position? Because I mean, it just seems like the business manager is, uh, potentially uh, sensitive financial information or not. Vulnerable, I guess would be a better word than sensitive. Um, and so I'm not sure that it would really be a good idea to bring someone from outside into that position.
I mean, what, so what I, uh, okay. We advertise the position and we do not have the candidates that I think would best fit us, especially in the governmental organization. Um, however, in these last few weeks, we have had an internal candidate that has expressed interest and has shown aptitude for the position. And so what to me would be really helpful is if we could post the position internally and provide the individual an opportunity to interview. I'm also wondering if our new director would be willing to join the interviews remotely. It could be possibly that myself and the treasurer and, um, the new director conducted the interviews. That way he, you know, was not being surprised by who's being hired. Um, so I just want to propose those options. And to answer your question, Chair, about hiring someone, like if someone could move up and then hire someone to fill that, um, lower position temporarily, it's really difficult to, to put that amount of training, um, into a temporary position because the burden on the person moving to the higher level position temporarily would kind of still be doing both jobs, even though there might be someone doing some of the basic work. It has taken two years of training, um, to get the person in the lower level job feeling really confident. And I don't think we could do much with a temporary staff person in that role.
Uh, trustee Foss?
I guess I don't really understand if you, if there's somebody internal, why we can't just ask him to step up and do it? Why, why do we have to do an opening and advertise it? I mean, when the library director gets here, he can do the opening or do it the way he wants. But why can't we just use the, have the internal person assume these responsibilities for the next six weeks? And if, if the library director wants to keep it that way, let him decide as well. I'm saying, I don't, I don't know why we have to make a formal job listing internal.
For the reasons that I just said, like, we can't. It is not possible to have the person currently doing, um, the lower level job also do the business manager job and then hire someone to fill that lower level job temporarily. So it either needs to be, we just don't have a business manager, or we look to promote permanently within to the person who is interested in the position. And, um, having just a temporary fix is just gonna be more work for everyone. So I, I don't feel like I have the words to explain that correctly. And also for every position, we open them an interview. Like, we don't just, um, move people from position to position. We make sure that all candidates who are internal are given the opportunity to apply.
Uh, Mr. Robinson?
I would assume that, uh, both of this internal person is, uh, if they were moved up to business manager, already holds, uh, you're, you're using the term lower position, but I'm assuming that's a pretty high position.
Right, I mean, they have the, um, necessary skills and education.
Right.
To do the job.
What I'm saying is their existing position wouldn't be that easily filled.
Correct, right.
So it's not like just somebody that's stocking shelves is gonna be the business manager. So just to make sure everybody understands that. And I like the idea, if it's, um, feasible, that, uh, the new director could sit in on interviews. I think that's the perfect solution.
And, and if the treasurer is then available, what can be the chair? I could, it be any of the trustee? You know, it would be that third, um, team member doing the interview. Uh, legal?
Yeah, and for, uh, trustee classes, he's a preference. We have one point five regarding preference for promotion from within. And it states that qualified individuals who are already employees of the district may be given preference over outside applicants to fill vacancies in the workforce. All internal candidates must fill out the internal candidate employment application found on the workroom webpage. So we would, uh, obviously advise the interim director to try and maintain consistency with the personnel manual if possible.
Uh, Mr. Campbell?
Um, I was just gonna be, um, in agreement with, I thought it would be a great idea. For, um, the new director, I mean, if we wait until when he's actually starts, I mean, he's, he's been hired, he's actually gonna start on September fifteenth. If the internal candidate has their resume and all the information about them, what's the difference between, if he can be on remote interview, what's the difference of it being then, then September fifteenth? To make a decision of his confidence in the internal candidate being the new business manager?
Uh, I think there's a difference, uh, you get more of a feel for a person in person, but, but we'll, we'll find out. But, um, interim director?
I would also just like to put in a timeframe perspective. So our new director starts September sixteenth. And within ten working days, our fiscal year has to be closed. And our accounts for the next fiscal year have to be assigned in the general ledger. And it is my assumption that he is going to have a lot of other tasks to be doing. And a ten day turnaround to do that in a brand new organization without proper support is setting that person up to fail.
Trust Foss?
Maybe this is for, for legal in the handbook, but if you interview and hire an internal candidate, does it have to be competitive? Do we have to have several candidates, or do we have to wait until you have several candidates? Or if there's a good candidate and it's only one?
It, I mean, we would post it for, you know, at least seven days to give an ample amount of time. But when there is only one candidate and they are qualified, we have hired them. It is, of course, best if you have a competitive process, but, um, and we would not hire that person if they were unable to fulfill the duties or answer the questions or be successful in the interview.
Director?
So, several things. Um, I strongly agree with that recommendation. I've also personally have sat down with this candidate, potential candidate internally. Um, and I think that there's something to be said about someone who knows our, our system and understands our process and procedures. Um, and of course, there's gonna be a learning curve either way. So I think that it's really wise of us to open this up to this candidate. I also agree with the interim director, the timing right now of it being, you're coming up to your end, needing to close out the books. Um, I, I think it's a wonderful idea to bring the director into this. Um, I am more than happy to continue to help this person, um, transition as well. Um, and then I think the last thing I want to kind of mention is, as a director comes in, this position as a director, they may not have the financial knowledge. Um, the, the intricate financial knowledge of the system we use. Um, maybe even how to run those reports where, so to put that on them. Um, and your end, it's, it's a huge weight. And so to be able to produce a lot of these reports that is being asked, that is needed to make these decisions, um, this would be really the wisest choice.
I'm gonna interrupt right here. We're starting to talk about this candidate and individuals. And I would just advise the board to maybe discuss the position as much as possible so we're not discussing individual. And if we'd like to go into an executive session, then discuss that we can. But I would want to be talking about personnel. If we could.
Uh, trustee Hamlin?
I think we have more urgent need to fill the, uh, speak so loudly, sorry. That if it's more urgent to fill the business position, the business manager position, I think we should just temporarily fill it with a person that might be qualified within. And instead of feeling bound by the policy, we make the policies. We can suspend the policy for an exception unless L S O sees a problem with that. And we need financial reports to close out the year and approve a budget. And if that person can help get us there, I don't know if their other job, their current job, again, I'm not thinking, I don't even have to be candidates, I don't care. That, that other job will have to go hang for now, or just be filled temporarily, but if we can't make a budget, and we can't close our books, we can't wait forever to fill the position, why don't we just temporarily put a person in that chair and do the job, and then go ahead and do the advertising process, and so that there's something in motion before the new director's here. And we can, we can have a candidate or several candidates lined up, but I think it's important we cope with that we uh, approve a budget at some point here, and we need to close the books for the year. And um, again, it's not somebody in Boise making the rule that says, oh, we hire and fire. So I, I say if, if we feel bound by a policy, let's just suspend it. That's, that's, we made these big decisions as members of the board, thus made that, it's not the biggest decision in the world, I don't think, but I think that that will be a prudent, sensible solution to get, to get past this. We, we need to close the books, we need to get a budget. We need to put somebody in the chair apparently to get this moving along and, and accomplish these things, and then um, I don't think that the person should be given, whether it might be any more or less hiring preference necessarily, um, which is a fair shot. And plus the director wants, the new director wants to be this person, so I think we oughta fight the biggest fire first.
Uh, treasurer?
The, I think the key word is temporary, um, this position and whatever other position that uh, this internal employee would be leaving. Temporary in this kind of position is really difficult, so we, I, I believe we need to look at it as more of a permanent. And so that is, again, what I suggest, because this position is very complex. And to put the energy and the money behind a temporary fill, I don't think is the wisest. And I would be, I don't know if I'm able to request for us to move to an executive session to discuss this a little bit further in detail. Um, and some information that I ha, I may have can help that. I'm happy to do that.
Uh, okay, so the attorney said that we could move to executive session even though it's not on the agenda? No, it would have to be a separate meeting.
I didn't say that. I mean, if there's an emergency, you can amend the agenda, but.
Okay, I don't think that would ever be.
I disagree with that. I think it is an emergency.
That's life and limb, as you're still already talking about it.
We wanna have funding for next year, but it is. I'm just asking, this is really serious, it's not funny. It's not temporary, it's not lighthearted.
Your Anderson?
Well, shoot, I forgot what I was gonna say exactly. Oh, I know, uh, this, it's, the board doesn't hire anybody except the director. And we've already done that, we hired a director. So us going into executive session, talking about somebody to fill this position, isn't even our job. Um, so I'm for giving the interim director the uh, go ahead to at least reach out to the new director and see if he's like, hey, that sounds like a great idea, I'd like to be set up when I get there. Or he might be like, you know what, I wanna pick this person myself, and then we go from there, I don't know. But I think that getting somebody in that position uh, quickly is important, especially this time of year, as our treasurer and the interim director have said. Um, I don't, I don't understand the distrust in um, the interim director finding somebody to fill this position. I can guarantee you, she does not want to put somebody in there that is not qualified. So I don't understand the distrust from the board. Um, it has went out for public as well, or is it just internal right now?
We, it was originally posted externally because you are correct. It is my job to hire staff. The board then decided that wasn't appropriate, and so we don't have it posted externally or internally.
And I believe that was the, the meeting I was in at as well. Um, I say we give her the ability to um reach out to the director and at least see if that's what he would be um, willing to do, and I, I'm guessing he probably would.
Uh, attorney?
Just additional fact for the board benefit and consideration. The personal manual two point four discusses an introductory period that applies both to new employees and existing employees that move to a new position. And so there would be a ninety day uh, time period where the employee's performance would be the determining factor as to whether or not he or she will receive permanent status, and during the introductory period, that employee may be released at any time. So there would be a two month period potentially where the new director with the staff could conduct an evaluation and maybe make a change.
Okay, and I was gonna say, it's not um, like a distrust thing, it's, it's that, you know, the incoming director um, I, I would think would want to, if his team that he's gonna be working with closely all the time, so it's just kind of a a respect of him thing, but we also want things to be able to work for now. And our treasurer?
I appreciate our attorney's comment just now, but I can tell you that this individual who's an internal candidate, just hearing that statement that they can be dismissed if the director doesn't like them is probably, they're rejecting their application at this moment. So we need to be very careful of how we're discussing this, because this is someone's livelihood, and it's like, so not appropriate, because this is my job to do, it is not your job.
I didn't say that he doesn't like them. I stated that the employee's performance would be the determining factor as to whether or not they would receive permanent status.
Trustee boss?
So I want the position filled ASAP, because I think we have a lot of work to do. If you have somebody internally and you don't have to, or maybe you only have to wait seven days, but if you don't have to do a competitive uh interview process, go for it, but I want the new director involved, because I want him to feel he, he understands uh and has to say and, and and saying, go ahead with this, so I, I like what trustee Anne Lee's saying about just do it temporary, let's get it going, but if it's too difficult and it's too hard on people, then, you know, follow your process and, you know, let's move forward. But have the new director involved.
Okay, so is it violating anything if we give you authority to post the internal position? Um, and that, and then come back and discuss it a little bit more next week? Um, that would give me an opportunity to, to speak with the new director?
Would it be like giving her authority to post the position, it would be scaling back, I guess, a reduction in force? Because the last motion you made at the other board meeting, I would consider maybe a reduction in force of the personnel manager. So she would already have the authority to make the hiring and firing decisions as the interim director.
Okay.
It's semantics, but I think it's important.
Okay, sorry, I, I didn't mean to insult, uh, the safe in that way, um.
Trustee boss?
So I move that we I'm not sure. Well, what I was, what, what I was saying is I, we put a whole hiring freeze until there, so I don't know, so that we lift the hiring freeze for this one internal position. The, so there could be an internal hire. To lift the hiring freeze for the, this one business manager internal position.
Uh, it's a long one. Yeah, trust me.
Just a real quick question, that we give in consideration to a short term contract to the former business manager at the compensation? If, if the person's available and they know the job, we could potentially get a contract, say, here, you're hired two months, it closes out the year, and help us with the reports. That's just a possibility, just running out there.
Uh, interim director?
That is also under my purview to intern their contracts for services. And I've already had that discussion, and at this point, it's not going to happen.
All right, uh, so let me see if I got your motion correct. I move that we lift the hiring freeze for this one, um, or
Internal. Our business manager.
The business manager from an internal position, is that?
That we lift the hiring freeze for the, for the business manager for an, an internal opening.
Yeah, internal hire.
Uh, treasurer?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanna make sure with that wording as well, it it was my assumption that as we are hiring this internal candidate or the business manager, there also needs to be a hire for that position. So because, so I just wanna make sure that was clarified, so that that person is not doing ninety hour workload.
Okay, so we would need to amend.
Oh, no, she's gonna go on for.
And our director?
I recommend that you just remove your motion that you put in last time and show a level of trust and respect for someone who's been doing this job for thirty years. And if you wanna open up lines of communication with the new director, I can do that, but I've not been asked to do that yet. And it just, again, feels like overreaching, and it feels like a lack of trust, and it feels just very, like, unhealthy, that you're not letting me do the job you're asking me to do. You're having me do everything else with this one task. It's very messy and very, like, does not feel good.
Uh, trustee Robinson?
I agree that I don't think there needs to be a motion for this, and I also, if there is a motion, um, why is it limited to an in-house? Don't we want this position filled? So why is it, why is it a caveat that it has to be the in-house hire?
Yeah, I guess we just were thinking that because that's the interim director had said.
I say that we just let, let her do the job, contact the director. Um, I think that would be the healthiest way for him to be approached. Um, because this is a team.
Uh, trustee Anne?
Yeah, I don't, I was for a sniff that, or sniffed out, but I think we should just give approval to the interim director to hire a business manager, but include the approval or input of the incoming director. This, if the position felt. I didn't consider if I were to be motion, but I think that would work for me, unless there's some other um, restricted thing with regard to counsel. I just think, let's fill the position that's urgent, suspend the freeze for one position and um, and give the interim director the uh, authority to hire the physician. And I can't speak for the backfill what happens to be an intern.
Uh, okay, and who was next?
I didn't.
Okay, okay, interim director?
It is not just the one position, and if you're talking about backfill and getting the subsequent positions that are associated, because it could likely be a chain of events. Um, there needs to be permission given to me to do my job and to hire all of those subsequent positions. Um, and there could potentially be two, depending on how the internal hires shake out. But it cannot be limited just to the business manager, because we won't be able to fill that position without filling the other position that, um.
Trustee boss?
So I'd like to amend my motion, uh, where you had to lift the hiring freeze of business manager internal position and add with approval of the new library director and the filling of all backfill positions.
If it's internal.
I just said internal, but that's in the motion.
Be so restricted, like, is there no trust? Like, that's what I don't understand. Like, this is killing me.
The new library director doesn't start his position till September sixteenth, and he needs to be involved. There's a lot of different hiring. We have the budget is, is reducing the amount of, of salary. He's gotta figure out how he wants to do it, and I there's some, some, some positions that have to still be eliminated. The library director needs to get his hands around it all, so I don't wanna take it off.
Anybody deciding who doesn't get a job, those decisions are already going to be made. He cannot do that in ten days of work before the start of the fiscal year. There is the gross misunderstanding of what the, what you would think the director is gonna be involved in. We are not halting the laying off of people until he arrives. I mean, that's just a fallacy, like, I, I just don't understand.
Okay, uh, so trustee boss, let me make sure that I got this correctly. Okay, so move that we lift the hiring freeze altogether?
No, of the business manager.
Or, um, well, it would be physician and the, the backfill.
Well, I said, yeah, so.
Uh, so maybe we could.
Business manager, internal position, and backfills.
Um.
I put it at the end.
Sure.
Okay, and it would end with, with approval of the new library.
Library director.
Okay, um. Sorry, trustee Robinson, I'm just trying to get the motions figured out before we move forward. Um. Okay, so uh, we could just lift the hiring freeze altogether, um, so with really involvement and approval.
Yeah, could I, could I please chime in real quick, because now you're trying to.
You're right, you're right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I actually read what you just said, um, and you're very much focused on one trustee's opinion. Uh, I think that it should be lifted, the whole thing should just be lifted, and she should be able to do her job.
Okay, well, it's just that it's his motion, I'm trying to make sure that I got it down right.
Talking about his motion for like ten minutes, and he can't get it done right.
The motion's on the table, we have to deal with motion.
Okay, so do you want to amend it to say, uh, move that we lift the hiring freeze?
Of the business, of the business.
So not, well, I mean, there's gonna be all the backfills along the way.
Business manager, manager, internal position, and backfills.
And backfills.
With approval of new library director.
Okay, um.
The, the previous motion states that um the interim director may not fill any positions, but may temporarily utilize any current employees who have been trained to fill positions until hiring freeze and budget issues are resolved. So the interim director can already fill positions with current employees.
That's what I thought.
And, and then uh, the other issue is that there is a, you call it a hiring freeze and budget issues, and financial circumstances or changes, changes of workload are valid reasons for reduction force under seven point one. And so I, I would ask the board then, does the budget issue still remain? Not related to the library necessarily, but to the staff? Is there a budget issue related to what you have set aside for staff? That's such a concern that we don't, we can't allocate it to filling positions. Does that make sense? Because if there's not, then we need to remove the, the reduction of force vote.
Okay, trustee boss?
Yeah, at that time, we understood there was eighty-three, or maybe it was eighty-six, earned employees on the payroll, and it needed to go to seventy-eight for the new fiscal year for the salary budget item that we were approving. So we already had too many employees on the payroll, so that's the budget part of it, it needed to be reduced anyway, so we didn't wanna hire more people wanted the library director to get here and sort it out.
Okay, so, uh, the motion is that we lift the hiring freeze for the business manager from an internal hire and backfills with approval of new library director.
It sounds like our previous. It sounds like our previous motion basically allowed that anyway. Because what you read is she has approval to assign or to use internal.
I thought that was for temporary, temporarily fill those positions? And so this would make it so that, uh, permanent could be hired.
Temporary is not a good solution, apparently, so, okay, so, yeah, let's vote on the motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion, Trustee Robinson?
Since the attorney just, uh, looked at that old motion, i- is it temporary? Does it state that it's temporary?
The motion, or?
The, the motion, the last motion from, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, saying that the interim director can, um, move employees within the.
May not.
So, yeah, is it a temporary situation that she can do it, or it just says she can move employees?
May not fill any positions, but may temporarily utilize any current employees. So, to me, it sounds like there's not really a change in position utilization, which isn't fair if you have an employee taking on more responsibility or more hours. Um, but I go back to the budget issue. If we don't have a budget issue for the position, then why would we prohibit that position being filled? Does that make sense? I'm not hearing that right now. If we're gonna have a continuing reduction in force under seven point one, then what's the financial circumstance or the change in workload that requires it? So if we have a budget for a position and that's not an issue, why not fill that position?
And response.
Because the new library director needed to be involved. And maybe this is the solution, this, and this new motion to say the new library director has to be involved. That, that was put in there until the new library director arrives.
Chair.
I know we are considering this as internal, but I would imagine for the sake of wanting to have the best possible candidate, the director would also want that, his interim, well, the interim director to be able to work with him to make the best decision for the library. So I would imagine that external candidates should also be an, an option in this and, uh, with the communication with the interim director and the coming director. And if they're in communication, it's a win-win.
Okay, uh, so then we would need to amend, although actually, uh, we still haven't done the other thing, um. Uh, interim director.
It is in my authority to hire staff, it is not in the board's authority. We do not have a budget issue. Each of these positions are budgeted. And Martin Walters has not been hired yet, he is not on our payroll, he has no authority. And I'm really struggling that the only reason that you've limited my ability to do my job is because of respect for Martin Walters, which shows a complete lack of respect for me and the work that I'm doing. And so I think you need a better reason than just to show Martin Walters for inhibiting me doing my job and cutting off my authority. Because we have a budget and we have staff and we have a need. There is no reason to take these actions right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're just, we're trying to find the balance of everything, um, and you, I thought, had suggested, um, that we advertised internally and had someone that wanted to move up, um. Anyway, that, I'm sorry.
Greater discussion, that is very upsetting right now.
Uh, Trustee Handley.
Um, if I understand our attorney correctly, was it, did you say that the internal has preference outside?
Well, the, the eternal, they have prefer over outsiders. But if we're talking, if we're in reduction in force land, which I'm not sure if we are, then once that occurs, employees who leave the district do, so this requires one leave. Then that employee would retain a first right of preference to return. So if we said we have a hundred positions, now we only have eighty because of financial circumstance or change in workload. And those twenty employees, if we reopen those eighty to a hundred positions, they would have first crack at that. Right, but my understanding is that we have a high-level administrative position that, uh, obviously the interim director's gonna be sensitive to working well with as well as wanting the new director to work well with, because it would directly affect her. But then we have, um, less senior or, uh, uh, lower level, if that's appropriate, uh, positions district-wide that, one, have positions that are changed or, or, or job descriptions or the way we're, we're, we're talking about what the position is, their name. There's some changes going on there as well that the interim director needs to have some flexibility to, to make sure that it's well-rounded. And so I think she could use some guidance on, is, is this reduction force, like, are we going the reduction in force route where we're gonna have less employees? Or are we really talking about, um, accommodating the director with new hires? And if that's the case, certainly, then she could talk to Mr. Walters about the business manager or those high-level employees. But I'm not sure if there's a benefit in restricting the remainder of the positions, uh, based solely on that consideration. But if there's an offsetting budget issue, then we definitely need to resolve that, because that means a position will be filled. So we don't get to the proof of filling the position if the position's going away.
And response.
We were trying to do this at the beginning of this discussion as fast as we could. And the option of using a current employee temporarily, which is what we gave the interim director at the previous motion, um, was discarded because it's not good for the employees at work. So we're taking the next step and just saying, if we got somebody internal, let's get this done fast. I don't wanna open it up to the outside and do all of this longer-term thing. We need to do it and get it done in, you know, in a couple of days, I think. Um, but interim director is not the director. The statutes say the director hires the people. We have a director coming, and that director is the one that needs to be involved in the decisions about the interim director. And that's why we put the hiring freeze in, so that the director has a say. And I would like to bring him in on this, but I don't wanna get involved in opening all these other positions up when some are going away and some are combining, and he might wanna do something a little bit different. Um, anyway, let's, uh, let's just do something fast internal with this one issue we have.
Um, yeah, and we are reducing the number of staff. So it would seem like it's a shame to bring someone new in and then fire the people who've been here, uh, for years when we're reducing force. So, yeah, I'm thinking it would be better to do the, the internal hire, um, thing. So, okay, so we need to vote on the amendment, uh, which is, um. Uh, adding with approval of the new library director, was that the only add?
The back.
Oh, and, and backfill, right.
Approval of new library director.
Okay, so adding and back, backfills after, from an internal hire, um, with approval of new library director. So, um, there's no further discussion on just the amendment only? Uh, those in favor of adding those words to it, say aye.
Can you repeat?
I'm sorry.
Uh, um.
Can you repeat the amendment, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I'll, I'll read the whole thing. Uh, so it has been moved that we lift the hiring freeze for, uh, the business manager from an internal hire. And then the amendment would be adding and backfills with approval of new library director. So all those in favor of the amendment to add and backfills with approval of new library director, say aye. Aye.
I'll say.
Okay, uh, the ayes have it and the amendment is, uh, carried. And so now we're to the main motion, which says, uh, that we lift the hiring freeze for business manager from an internal hire and backfills with approval of the new library director. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say.
Uh, aye, and those opposed? Uh, okay, they're saying, okay, so the ayes have it and the motion is carried, that we lift the hiring freeze for the business manager from an internal hire and backfills with approval of new library director. Um, so to our next one, we went way over time with that, but that really needed to be resolved. All right, so the next agenda item is discussion of CLN's position on DEI. And since, you know, Lee was, Trustee Handley was the one who introduced that, uh, last month, I'll let him see first.
I have a fair statement. Chapter one point two, CLN personnel manual, entitled equal employment opportunity, statement reads, now meeting here, hiring and decisions affecting employment, including classification, transfer, discipline, and discharge will be made without regard to the race, religion, gender, age, national origin, or non-job-related disability. No job or class of jobs will be close to any individual except for environmental or physical attribute, gender, or age, as a bona fide occupational qualification. I'll skip the last sentence. So, yeah, when I go to CLN's employment section on our website, entitled Work With Us, a portion included under the subheading entitled Embrace Library Culture, it reads, "We create an inclusive culture that honors diversity, equity, and inclusion." I believe that this is in congruement with the CLN's personnel management. In my opinion, diversity, equity, inclusion is a form of affirmative action, and as such, it is discriminatory in nature, and therefore DEI should have no place within the community library network. I recommend the board give consideration to at least two solutions. One being the easiest is to direct the interim director to have the DEI verbiage removed from CLN's website. Or number two, these are the two options I'm aware of, is amend chapter one point two of the personnel manual and specifically state that CLN is an equal opportunity employer and that it embraces meritocracy in all personnel management decisions. All I have.
Uh, Trustee Robinson.
Um, I like that last, um, sentence you, Greg, did you read that again?
With the board, with the chair's permission.
Yeah, great.
Is an equal opportunity employer and it embraces meritocracy in all personnel management decisions.
Thank you. So, uh, I don't, I don't know about the, uh, the embrace this meritocracy part. I, I don't hate that, but I don't know if that's necessary. But I do like the first part of this sentence to replace the, uh, the DEI verbiage.
And response.
Um, I think what Trustee Handley was talking about was changing, or at one point two in the policy man, manual was the second option. I think it's just simply in the webpage, which is the first one on our statement, just strike the words that honors diversity, equity, and inclusion, and make the sentence read, "We create an inclusive culture celebrating differences and unique learning styles." What's wrong with that? That's asking for everybody the equity. It means a lot of different things to a lot of people. And on the national political scene right now, um, you listen to one presidential candidate, it means equal outcomes. And that's a lot different than what other people say. That just, the library should not be getting itself in culture, uh, cultural movements. Let's be a little neutral and just, if we wanna be, celebrate differences and unique learning styles, we can say that. But let's not get involved in diversity, equity, and inclusion, cause it's too confusing and it is a, uh, cultural, uh, button right now. Let's, let's not try to be a leader in that, just strike those words.
Trustee Campbell.
Oh, I think we should blend the two, because I agree with, uh, Trustee Handley and Trustee Plous. And, uh, I like CLN embracing merit, merit to, how you say that, meritocracy, thank you, bases on merit. Um, and then also, um, I agree with Trustee Plous in just taking out the diversity, equity, inclusion, and say that we create a culture celebrating differences and unique learning styles. I just think putting those together would be good.
Uh, yes, I know, you know, there's some people who disagree with this. Uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion sound really good on face value. Um, however, uh, the academia who invented and pushed DEI, uh, or pushed the DI concept clearly state it is intended to divide the people against each other and usher in Marxism. And certainly, I don't want discrimination against anyone. And that includes whenever one group is favored, the other groups are automatically discriminated against. DEI is anti-equal employment, and so I, I agree with, uh, the proposals. Response.
I make a motion to strike the words out of the webpage statement, that honors diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Okay, so your motion is to, uh, to strike, uh, the words that honors diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Yep.
Okay.
So it'd just be, um, culture that, culture celebrating differences and unique learning styles?
Yeah, leave the rest. Inclusive culture, celebrating differences in unique learning styles.
Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, uh, it has been moved to strike, uh, the words that honors diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it sounds unanimous, and so the motion is carried to strike the words, uh, that honors diversity, equity, and inclusion.
We see what the clean, uh, we see by the same those sentence, read, like, we create? Or no, we celebrate, is that right?
We create an inclusive culture, celebrating differences and unique learning styles.
Right, so I think we should say what replaces.
Uh, it, it's just, oh, you wanted to add something about the merit, meritocracy?
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, you need to restructure the sentence and or just, we should be striking, okay.
We're just striking those words.
Okay, okay, if that leaves it on, okay, okay, thank you.
Chair, could you reread or read this new sentence so that it's heard?
Uh, okay, do you want the whole sentence or the paragraph? Okay, uh, "We create an inclusive culture celebrating differences and unique learning styles."
No. You can do that.
Okay, um. Okay, was there any further motions on that section or should, or discussion? Or should we move on to the next agenda item?
Um, yeah, I mean, doesn't this, looks as number two, is that in the, didn't, wasn't something supposed to be changed in that as well?
Uh, we could have separate motions. Uh, so did you want to, Trustee Handley, did you want to add something about one point two? Did you want to motion on that?
What, I wasn't necessarily asking to change.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I was just saying it'd be, you know, we strike it, which is the easiest solution, in my opinion, or we modify the personnel manual verbiage and then strike it as a result of that. So I think that the outcome just now was satisfactory.
Okay, perfect. Okay, all right, then, uh, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is response to public comment, uh, previous comment, or previous to today's public comment. Uh, previous comment, or previous to today's public comment. Trustee Boss?
Uh, a statement that I'll read and give it for the record. I've got copies. New CLN budget is not making extreme cuts. We're taking a 1% increase, which is increasing the budget by 50,000. Growth from increased tax base due to new or increased value properties this year is adding about 85,000. The most we could add by Idaho law is 3%, which would increase the budget another 100,000. Even increasing by that amount would not balance the budget without any cutbacks. CLN is not overspending. The last report for the first of July showed CLN was 62% of its budget, even though 75% of the fiscal year had elapsed. In my opinion, the salary benefit line item would have increased too much if we provided the recommended salary increases. CLN simply has too large of a payroll and benefits to accommodate recommended salary increases with maximum amount of tax increase allowed. The number of, a number of new positions were added by the previous board funded with excess tax funds, collected tax funds back then, and they were set up with too low of a salary. Senior staff made a recommendation to reduce payroll by reducing part-time positions and adding full-time to positions to replace them. That decreases the number on the payroll that gives us the staff, gives more staff a 40-hour work week with benefits. In order to accommodate those changes, a reduction in library hours was recommended. They looked at attendance statistics and picked on the least used times at various libraries to reduce hours. The reduced payroll budget item as needed still provides recommended raises. Please understand that the reduced hours were proposed by senior staff as a way to meet the budget and were not initiated by the board. The budget does not list hours of operation required or required number of staff. It lists the funding for salaries. The new library director will arrive in September. He'll be the one to determine the best ways to keep libraries open with the salary budget. He's the manager of the operation and he may well come up with alternate solution, including returning some part-time positions and keeping Sunday hours. We also eliminated the bookmobile and some outreach staff as those vehicles are getting expensive to maintain. CLN can use the Sprinter van to bring materials to set up a booth inside of a s- school instead of having patrons come out to the bus at the parking lot. Our insurance carrier, ICRIM, reduced CLN liability last October 1st from three million to half a million, but did not reduce the premium. That was not fair to CLN, but we didn't have time to find an alternative way to get back to three million coverage, even though the board requested multiple quotes. Some of us are bracing in anticipation that ICRIM will simply drop coverage of CLN after the huge 1 million plus claim for pipes breaking and water damage this year. If the board has to plan for getting alternate commercial insurance and we want multiple quotes to get the best deal, we need cooperation of senior staff to accomplish that. It will undoubtedly cost more this year. I hope you understand this is a difficult problem. As for legal counsel changes, we really do not have any choice. Legal counsel needs to attend board meetings when the board is making decisions so he can advise us not to make legal mistakes. The library director requested attendance of legal counsel at all meetings. In the past, the board rarely had legal counsel present at meetings, which was probably ill-advised when working on policies. Policies we had to work on this year were highly contentious matters not faced in the past, and we had no choice but to use legal counsel more. Idaho, eh, the changes in Idaho laws required the board to make those policy changes. We had no choice but to, and it was completely necessary. Now those material policies are completed. We should need legal counsel less. Another consideration on the materials budget is to understand that CLN has over $650,000 of insurance payment funds to use for the completion of reconstruction, furnishing, and the replacement of water damaged materials. A large portion of the damaged materials are out of print and not replaceable, so alternates will be acquired. There will be a great deal of new material added this year, even if the small materials budget reduction was made. The new director's salary was, uh, salary and the increase from what he is being paid at his current job, um, we have the previous board to thank for that. They raised the salary bar way up when they brought the previous director a year ago. Any new candidate will simply not accept less than what was agreed to last year, which is public information. The current board's hands have been tied by the previous boards on this issue. Please keep in mind that our director was a finalist, the second choice from last year, in a nationwide search a year ago. Because the search and interviews were only 12 months before his interview board, and it can be said, considered that the first choice turned down the offer and we're now making the offer to the second choice. However, it is clear that the current board would have considered our new director as the first choice.
All right, so, uh, I move that we extend the meeting by 20 minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, then, uh, motion is carried and the meeting is extended by 20 minutes. Um, I also have a response to public comment. Uh, interim director?
Well, I agree with several things that trustee just spoke about. I find it incredibly disheartening that you are literally bringing the reduction hours on senior library staff. We just talked about that earlier in the evening. You all asked me to balance the budget, and now you just threw me under the bus, the community, and to all staff. I'm saying it was my idea. We could not balance that budget without doing that. So I think it's very harmful what you just said in that statement. I also understand from that statement that the new director is going to be making all of the layoff decisions. So all, what I take from that is that I need to stop all of those actions that I had already planned and that he will just be left with that work when he arrives. And I want to make certain that that's exactly what you just said, and that's what the expectations are. Because I am not going to get caught in the middle of making layoffs just to be thrown under the bus in a month.
Okay, I, I didn't interrupt you, um, because I, I understand why you would respond. Um, but this actually isn't a discussion, it's a response to previous, uh, public comment, so. And so, so I did let you speak.
And I appreciate that. It's just extremely troubling.
I, I understand. Um, okay, so, uh, my response to public comment was that a citizen claimed that we violated open meeting law and didn't respond to her complaint email to the board. Uh, most of us on government boards know that verbally asking for information or sending a complaint email to the board is absolutely not an official FOIA request, uh, nor can it be considered an official open meeting law complaint. Uh, those of us who've been on government boards also know that a government board would be advised by their attorney to not respond to threats or complaints that are legal in nature. Uh, the general public does not necessarily know these things, so I thought the information would be helpful, uh, to them. So there are official forms to fill out if someone wants to pursue those options, so. Did anyone else have, yes, trustee Robinson?
I did a chance, uh, last meeting to thank all the public that came out to, uh, just be, because that's, uh, every year it's important to hear from them. Um, I, I am very, uh, sad that, um, library hours are going down or being closed 100% on certain days. Um, I do, I heard clearly that there is a, uh, a call out for, if we're spending this money, let's have good service. And I think that that's so important. Um, one, one thing also I'll say is there was a comment about, uh, somebody having maybe, um, two or three families living in their backyard in like a trailer and a tent or something like that, um, which is, you know, very sad and horrible. Uh, I would, and I don't mean this disrespectful at all. I'm assuming that those families are not, um, paying property tax. Those are the families that need the libraries open. Those families in the backyard of somebody else's house that is paying that extra $18 a year for the library. The ones that aren't paying property tax are the ones that need the libraries open, um, every day, and staff to help them. So I just found that that was kind of a, an interesting comment because there are taxpayers and there are non-taxpayers and everybody deserves a life.
Yes. All right, uh, then the next agenda item is discussion of future agenda requests. Really like to request no more policies for now. Um, we're, we're in too much flux and it's just too stressful. Trustee Robinson?
I would like a special meeting with, um, the rep from Hartwell to do a presentation, if possible, regarding insurance.
Okay, um, I am in favor of that. Do we have consensus on that? Okay, okay, I guess we have consensus on that. Okay, trustee Boss?
Well, I know you, I don't know the status of the, uh, policy that I introduced here, adult access only restricted areas, but I want to put that on the agenda. That's something we need to go through because it's involved with the minor policy. And maybe it isn't in the form we want, but we need to go through it. So that, I would like that on the, added to the queue.
Okay, yeah, we, excuse me, we added it to today's agenda, so it would just roll over.
Okay.
Trustee Hanley?
Yeah, this one's more of a question in combination of our agenda item. We have a new director coming on board. I can't secretly call on you or trustee Boss or any, any other trustees here. Do we need to identify, let's say, our top three most urgent issues at a meeting and say, okay, Mr. Director in this case, we think this is the hottest one or two things we need to get resolved. I, I don't know, when, when do we actually provide tasking, we'll call it, to the director? So we, the new director, we have a budget issue going on here. Well, it may be resolved and we have, um, the card policy maybe, but do we, do we need to identify, let's say, we call work list that we need to say there are two or three really hot subjects that need to be really pushed up high on his agenda, uh, while he's working here? I don't know. I've never hired a director before.
Um, I would imagine that would be a good idea, but we should let him settle in and, and get the ropes of our institution first. And then, trustee Boss?
Yeah, I can say on that, that we're setting the agenda ourselves. You're going to pick up what we think is important, I think, good.
All right, um, anything else on that?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Hanley?
Do we need to run up the budget? We didn't, we didn't approve a budget here, so.
It's already on.
Um, yeah, we, we do have, the 8/22 meeting is already scheduled. Um, so uh, where, where's the meeting on the 22nd?
I don't know, off the top of my head.
Okay.
It's not till 6:00 PM.
So.
Hayden.
Right.
Hayden.
Yeah, it does say Hayden. All right, uh, so I was hoping not to have a meeting next week, but, uh, so is six o'clock still good for everyone? Okay, all right, interim director?
That was scheduled to be just like a 30-minute meeting where all we're talking about is the budget. Um, so I would need to be gone by 7:00 PM and have everything wrapped up, so it would only allow for an hour long meeting.
Okay, so we should make it earlier.
We're gonna put any deals on.
If we get the answers on those two things, you know, the financial and insurance should be a non-issue. Just confirm what's there is all. I don't think it's a big thing, just.
Yeah, and, uh, trustee Campbell?
Right, so, I mean, so we were going to have the Hartwell presentation also with budget on, on that day? No?
I would love to have it the same date rather than having a bunch of extra special meetings, but it depends on what the board wants.
And what the representative.
Yeah, if he's available.
Available, yeah.
Uh, trustee Hanley?
They want to bring, present it all the way up to the first. I mean, that's where our next meet, regular meeting is, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh.
The other question I had was, is there, we can't move the meeting up a little bit earlier on the 22nd? Is there, is there, is there a facility being spanned or some other reason why if we're trying to squeeze a little more in there? Should we have a meeting at five o'clock?
I think that would be better just in case.
Yeah. Five o'clock's fine.
I don't know if our bins are available. I wouldn't know that.
Okay, so you'll, uh, talk and then we'll.
I had post falls.
The, you know, earlier open.
Uh, what did you have supposed to?
I had 22nd and post falls, yeah.
Oh, uh, no, the agenda says Hayden.
I mean, second and Hayden. 15 minutes later.
Okay, and so everyone's available at five.
Yeah, well, they're only open.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty, uh, well, then, if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, it has been moved that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, it is unanimous and we are now adjourned.